Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the town meeting. First, I'm gonna ask, we'll do some housekeeping issues, but first, I'm gonna ask everyone who can stand up, please, to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Yeah. Pledge of Allegiance.
I am the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my name.
Thank you. It's a little bit out of the norm, but we have some special guests with us this evening, so I'm first gonna recognize Jason Allison.
Hello. Everyone hear me okay? All right. We are going to get this party started right tonight with some positivity. If you don't already know, we have some newly crowned state champions in our school district. Arne Shova Boys Ice Hockey Team is the MIAAD III State Champions. So, tonight, we'd like to offer a warm Lancaster welcome and recognize Lancaster senior captains of our boys' ice hockey team, Senior Captain Dylan Lowe. Coach Matt "Mr. Biggs." And, of course, our Athletic Director, Tanya Rich.
As a hockey coach, I have a number of speeches on my plate at all times, and usually, I don't find many nerves in those speeches, but for some reason, in front of all of you, I find myself a little nervous, so we'll see what's going on tonight. But first, thank you to the Town of Lancaster and the Select Board for inviting us. It's certainly a great honor as a member of this community. Thank you to Dylan and Joe for coming tonight and taking their night away from studying, I'm sure, and joining us to be honored. Without these two, it certainly would have been a much longer year. Thank you to Athletic Director Tanya Rich for supporting athletics in the Shova Regional. And on behalf of our team, thank you to all of them for making what was an incredible ride just even that much better and allowing us and our other coaches, Owen Murphy, Justin Bowman, and Dan Glover, for embracing what we teach them and what they teach us every single time that we step on the ice. There are nine Lancaster residents on the team, which is almost half, so we certainly are well represented in the Town of Lancaster. The other seven of those Lancaster residents are actually at the New England Sports Center right now, participating in a summer league, getting ready for next season, so they're certainly in great company. If you were to ask Dylan and Joe, and I promise I'll be brief, I like to tell stories or even try to find silver linings in whatever is going on. My grandparents also share my last name of Biggs. They have been Lancaster residents for over thirty years, right off of Route 117, so if you ever see my grandfather in the yard, up on a ladder, please tell him to get down. Kidding, of course. But Joanne and Forrest are a huge part of my life, so Lancaster has been a huge part of my life. My dad grew up on 117 for his entire life, so being honored tonight is a huge privilege, so thank you to the whole community for all the support that you see, and, I mean, look at the attendance tonight, right? It's an awesome turnout, so thank you again. Thank you to Select Board, the Town of Lancaster, for the great honor, so thank you.
Tanya, any comments?
I'm a big speechmaker tonight.
Okay. If you want to see a great video, if you Google the championship game, I believe Mr. Quinn got the winning goal, is that correct?
Yeah.
There you go. Thank you very much for coming. I guess I'm sorry to have to ask, but I'm gonna ask everyone to keep each other, or talk to each other in a civil tone, respectful of yourselves and disrespectful regarding one else. Hope that's the case. Now, a question came up at, well, two questions came up this afternoon, one at 3:46 and the other one at 4:38, asking if we were gonna have a ballot, I'm sorry, move this closer, if we were gonna have a written ballot. The answer to that is no. We had several planning sessions over a month ago, we had another one two weeks ago, the issue of the written ballot never came up, at least to my attention, until, as I said, quarter of four, and then 4:30, so. But I would offer, if anybody is concerned about how they're voting, or how someone else is gonna perceive how they're voting, we do have two extra rooms. The gym has a fair amount of people, but I believe the cafeteria is rather lightly populated, so if you are concerned, I would encourage you to go there. And no one can see the video of those rooms except myself and Chris to see this in the control room. As far as giving presenters, eight minutes, with the exception of the budget, which is going to be, with the exception of the--
Mr. Moderator, I think that wants you to speak up or speak closer to the microphone.
Chris is telling me you have to swallow those things. So, the, given presenters, eight minutes to present the article. People for or against, given three minutes, and we just need to keep things moving along. There are twenty-one articles, three of them are not going to go forward this evening, but we still have a lot to cover. Now, with the eight-minute issue, I have the exception to that, is the budget. Now, we gave twenty minutes for that, and we're gonna see how that goes. Again, the services of David Carr with Jesse Tarble are the deputy moderators and the other ones, so from time to time, I'm gonna be asked of them specifically for, to give you an update, and certainly, I would encourage them to raise their hand or something so that I know this one is important to talk. Jesse, if you could move, I guess to your left a little bit, now I can see you, and Chris to see you back.
All right, we're gonna try calling Article One one more time. Ms.--
Okay, so, I'm gonna recognize Kate Hodges. Oh, I'm sorry, I did not introduce everyone as I intended to do. Starting at my left and in back, we have Attorneys Bettinelli and Freed, Town Council. Coming forward, you have Cheryl Garapi, Finance Director, followed by Kate Hodges. Then we have the Select Board, Steve Kerrigan, Jason Allison, and Alex Turner, followed by Amanda Cannon. In the front row, we have members, all the members of the Finance Committee, Dick Trussell, Susan Sali, Jocelyn Mylot, Michelle Vasquez, and Emily Kerrigan, and I know there are at least four Planning Board members here, they're not on stage, but they're dispersed throughout the body here. Okay. Now, I'm gonna recognize--
Motion.
Kerrigan?
For a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate by taxation or transfer from available funds the sum of $27,000,0938 to defray the expenses of the Town and School Department beginning in FY 2024 as follows. Municipal Services, $6,570,599. Risk Management Debt Leases, $2,685,830. Minuteman Regional Technical High School, $2,382,024. Neshova Regional School District, $15,285,485. Aspen Valley Regional Technical High School, $87,000. Again, for a total of $27,000,0938. Provided, however, this appropriation shall be contingent upon affirmative action by the voters of the town on the passage of a Proposition Two and a Half, so-called ballot question, to assess an additional $1.2 million in real estate and personal property taxes for funding the Town and School Department's operating budget.
I was trying to get an update on the microphone, so that was moved--
And seconded.
Seconded.
Good evening. My name is Kate Hodges. I'm your Town Administrator. Tonight's presentation is a conclusion of a little more than eleven months of analyzing, forecasting, presenting, cutting, and educating ourselves, Town Boards and Committees, and residents regarding Lancaster's financial overview and how we may best navigate a path forward. The budget process began with capital planning and project equipment requests coming in from all Town Departments and the school. At this time, the requests were in excess of $4 million, and as we stand here today, the FY '24 budget outlined here does not have any appropriations for capital within the levy. In terms of operations in the general fund, the initial deficit projection was more than $1.9 million. That was our starting point ten months ago, almost $2 million short. It was clear that in order to correct and stabilize Lancaster's finances, an operational override would need to be proposed. The question was, how low could we get that override number, and what did we have to do or rethink in order to do so? Before we dive into that, it's important to understand what an override is, also referred to as Proposition Two and a Half. Proposition Two and a Half places constraints on the amount of levy or taxes, which a city or town can raise, including how much taxes can increase from year to year. A levy limit is a restriction on the amount of property taxes a community can raise. Proposition Two and a Half established two types of levy limits. First, a community cannot levy more than 2.5% of its total full and fair cash value of all taxable real and personal property, and a community can only increase by 2.5% year to year. These calculations make up what is known as the levy ceiling. The levy ceiling must always be at or below, I'm sorry, the levy limit must always be at or below the levy ceiling, meaning the amount that we increase taxes may not exceed the top allowable amount by law. Proposition Two and a Half provides communities with the flexibility to levy the limit or our tax ceiling on both a temporary and a permanent basis. As property taxes are the single largest source of funding for our government and our schools, this budget, if approved, relies on the passage of a ballot question entitled Prop Two and a Half Override, which is a one-time, single-year authorization to tax above the 2.5% by $1.2 million. So what does this mean in real numbers? To begin this year, we had to take fiscal year '22's levy limit, which was about $20.3 million. We then added the allowable increase of 2.5%, or about a half a million dollars, plus our actual new growth estimate, which was $337,710, and our debt of $910,000. That brings us to where we are now, a levy max of a little over $22 million at a tax rate of $17.19. This means for every thousand dollars of value on your home, you pay $17.19. For this proposed budget, we take the levy limit number, which you just saw from this year that we're in, we add the 2.5% allowable increase of $528,771, then our estimated new growth, and then the override of $1.2 million. We then add to that our debt of $900,000, and our new levy max becomes $24.8 million with, or with a proposed tax rate of $18.88. This is an image of the 2023 election ballot, which residents will use to cast their votes next Monday, May 8th, for many Town Boards and Committee vacancies. Question one is the Proposition Two and a Half Override. It can be found at the bottom right-hand corner of the ballot and reads, quote, "Shall the Town of Lancaster be allowed to assess an additional $1,200,000 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of funding the operating budgets of Town, Government, and the School Departments for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023," end quote. You answer yes to allow this and pass the override, or no to disallow it. When you entered the building this evening, you may have seen a sheet of paper containing the ballot question language, which was just depicted on the slide before. In years past, the motion and actions to approve the Town's budget were completed by the passage of one article at Town Meeting, a motion to, quote, "raise and appropriate" those funds for whatever fiscal year was next. This year, because the amount is over 2.5, is needed to fund both the Town and the School appropriations. The process is a two-step. The first is to appropriate funds, which will happen via affirmative vote on this article this evening. The second is to raise those funds, essentially giving the Town permission to tax. This can only happen through a yes vote on Monday's question one during the election. A yes is needed in both articles, both the article and the question, in order to have a budget for next fiscal year. Initially, the deficit for the FY '24 budget was projected to be somewhere between $1.75 and $1.9 million. My office received requests from Department Heads in the early summer, and between then and the middle of September, we worked together to reduce the budget by $500,000. This was accomplished by removing additional hours from staff positions, which were set below forty, but still receiving over twenty, so getting benefits. We didn't fill the police lieutenant position, again. We redesigned several library positions to reduce the total number of FTEs. We removed two additional firefighters, which were proposed in order to phase out the on-call services a little more in furtherance of a more conventional full-time fire operation. We removed existing and planned operational expenses, including conferences and training for staff, expanded GIS services, Wi-Fi upgrades, and other IT-related infrastructure in and around Town Buildings, vital record storage and management assistance, and recreational programs, both for recreation and for senior services. So as we stand here this evening, we have a little over $26.1 million in revenue and nearly $27.2 in expenses. We have been asked, why can we not use free cash and stabilization quite often, and it is a good question. Here you can see the Town's free cash position for the past five fiscal years. The green line depicts the account balances, and the orange line is the use of the Town's funds. As you can see, over the many years, we have built up free cash, only to spend it down either in part or in total, to ensure a balanced budget. Last year, the Town used a little more than $760,000 from free cash to balance its budget, and this severely depleted the Town's reserves. This is why the lines appear so close together compared to years past. In short, Lancaster is running out of savings. Additional use of free cash will further erode Lancaster's credit rating, and ultimately, our ability to fund and finance capital projects at affordable and reasonable rates. Ultimately, lower bond and credit ratings result in higher interest rates. For Lancaster, this is especially problematic, as we, in conjunction with the other two towns of Neshova School District, contemplate building and, more importantly, funding and financing a new high school facility at a number close to $40 million just for Lancaster. To some, the Town's financial situation was a surprise, and to others, the need for an override has been a long time coming. Regardless of which notion describes you best, the Town did not come to this conclusion lightly, nor is it that financial circumstances the result of something that happened overnight. Why this year has been asked a lot recently, and the answer is multifaceted. Beyond what I just described, relative to the use of reserves, and just as homeowners have seen increases in their energy, utility, and personnel expenses, so has the Town, personal expenses, so has the Town. Municipal expenses not related to personnel have risen nineteen and a half percent from last year, and directly correlate to the increases nationwide for energy, fossil fuels, building, roadway, and construction materials. Our school population is also increasing. Neshova's district assessment is based in part on a five-year rolling average, which has increased over time. Minuteman's assessment correlates to a prior four-year enrollment. For this year alone, Lancaster had nearly ten additional Minuteman students, so roughly speaking, at $31,000 per student. That's an increase of over $300,000 in just one year for just one school. In terms of a line-by-line analysis, while Lancaster's revenues are projected to increase by three and three-quarters percent, expenses average far higher. And while it is true that additional commercial development that has the ability to positively affect the Town's financial outlook and bottom line in future years, the State sets parameters by which cities and towns may estimate their new growth. New growth is a term used to describe additional funds collected either from construction permit fees, new or larger home assessments, or other taxable items which had not previously been captured on the tax rolls. When setting Lancaster's new growth estimate, we are only permitted to use a number at or lower than that of the previous year's receipts. So for FY '24, we're looking at this current fiscal year. Our new growth estimate was originally $100,000. Again, that's not $100,000 total, that's $100,000 more than what we collected the former year. Since this estimation, a couple of development projects have begun, and the Town received additional permit revenues, increasing our estimated growth number to $200,000. The idea that when we receive new or additional revenues, our reliance increases on taxation decreases, but we have to have those receipts in hand. Think of it as cash in hand, money in the bank, the check has to clear. The Neshova Regional School District staff, particularly the superintendent and the business team, have been incredible partners this year in trying to keep expenses down and to work with us to put out more and more information for folks to better understand what is needed in terms of dollars to operate our schools. The district's budget document is available online, and the district office has limited copies in print, should folks be interested in seeing the whole picture. In summary, what is needed can be seen here, with the largest expense, as expected, covering staff salaries and benefits. These total $52 million. Non-salary expenses, including classroom needs and utilities, equal a little under $13 million, for a total operating budget of $65 million. For Lancaster, this is a $700,000 increase. In terms of revenues, which were used to support the district's endeavors, you can see that the towns of Lancaster, Bolton, and Stowe payments are the single largest sources of revenue, with state aid coming in at a distant second. Neshova's total revenue is equal to their expenses at just under $65 million. Neshova's district assessment is determined by a three-step process. First is the minimum local contribution, which is set by the State Department of Education. The second is the variable assessment, which takes into account the rolling average number of Lancaster students over a five-year lookback. The third is debt. The enrollment numbers were discussed at length during the months of March and April, and during the school's annual tri-Town Finance Meeting. The bottom line is Lancaster students' enrollments have seen a jump since FY '21 of a quarter percent, while the other towns of Stowe and Bolton have seen a corresponding decrease in their enrollments. Lancaster student population is shifting, it's increasing, and the costs are associated with that. Lancaster is also part of the Minuteman Regional Technical High School District. Minuteman's assessment for Lancaster, like Neshova, is based on an average rolling enrollment of a four-year lookback. And similar to Neshova's assessment, Minuteman has also seen an increase in Lancaster-based students to the high school. As a matter of fact, the percentage change of Lancaster-based Minuteman students from the '21-'22 school year to this current school year was more than 5%. Despite the increases in assessment totals, the per pupil expenses for Minuteman have remained relatively consistent. This coming year, the cost per student will be still around $31,000, and we will have nearly sixty Lancaster residents as students in Minuteman. It is these shifts in enrollment which lead to an increased assessment for FY '24. Minuteman's total assessment for all of its member towns is 13.8 above that of FY '23, and totals approximately $25,500,000. Lancaster's portion of the FY '24 is $2,379,621, or an increase of $200,000. There's been a lot of discussion relative to what might happen if the budget or the override fails. The bottom line is we're required to submit a balanced budget to the State on or before the first of the fiscal year. If the override or the budget fail, we will cut until we achieve balance. This is the second iteration of the budget, so this evening, you're looking at, and we are discussing, our option B. There are other options, but before I go there, I want to be clear about a few things. No one wants to propose more taxes. No one wants to contemplate losing staff, reducing services, or gutting services to the point that will only hurt Lancaster more, both financially and as a community. The very fact that dedicated and professional departments and staff work together to do not only what is required, but what is expected from their residents, is what makes Lancaster a community. It's what makes people want to live here, to raise their children here, to age here. So what do you love best about this community? Is it the safety of our streets and our neighborhoods? Is it the friendly faces that you know? They know your name, and you know theirs? Is it the staff? Is it the civic cultural and rec programs within our library, or through the rec department? Is it human services operations, which help our most vulnerable citizens? They get, give access to mental health services, or transitional assistance? Is it community events like Halloween on the Green, or health fairs? Is it Lancaster's beautiful landscapes, its farm, its extensive conservation and recreation areas? Or maybe it's the history? Whatever it is, it costs to keep those things viable and vibrant. It costs more today than ten years ago, than five years ago, than last year. When we are trying to make up a $1.2 million, please know there will be cuts across all areas. This is not a scare tactic, it's not a farce, it's not what we want, it's what's needed to achieve balance. And while it is a policy determination of the Select Board in consultation with the Finance Committee, the numerical cuts shown here constitute our Plan C, by the numbers, to achieve a $1 million cut. That's 350 from our schools collectively. It's half a million dollars in municipal services, which is only, has about $3 million in discretionary funding that can be cut due to contracts, insurances, and other property regulations, so that's 20%. Plan D would include no money from the schools, and therefore, the Town has to absorb and cut $850,000. Plan E is no school and no use of free cash, and that has the Town cutting $1.2 million from municipal services. That cut isn't 20%, it's 40%. This further details cuts of $500,000 to the operational budgets in Town. For the administrative arm of the Town, a cut of $80,000 results in the removal of Town Funds for historic preservation, the Memorial Day Celebration, limits or limits the Town's use of staff and board committee trainings, reductions to public licenses such as GIS, staff reductions equalling up to two FTEs. $90,000 cut from the DPW equals reductions to operational and material budgets, abandonment of proactive road treatments and snow removals, discontinuance of tree maintenance, and lack of stormwater basin cleanouts, and at least one FTE. Police and Fire has a cut of $150,000 resulting in the loss or severe reductions in overnight patrols, delayed response time for emergency, declining mutual aid responses, and the limitation or discontinuance of the Town-operated ambulance services. Health and Human Services would see a reduction in outreach hours, discontinuance of certain transitional assistance programs, cuts to the rideshare transportation programs, closure of the Town Beach, and the splash pad. The Library would experience cuts in programming and significant reduction in hours. And lastly, while it is not appropriate for us to opine on what school services and programs may suffer from additional costs, it's important to at least note that a $300,000 decrease in Lancaster's assessment equates to plus or minus $1 million district-wide. And it is also important to note that these cuts are not for one year, these cuts are forever. This is because if we don't raise and appropriate the amount needed to sustain the operation and are forced to cut personnel, those personnel are gone. As draconian and unappealing as these cuts are, it's important to know that cutting this fiscal year doesn't fix the problem, as a matter of fact, it exacerbates it. Without an override to correct our imbalance, the Town's deficit only grows. The authority to boost tax dollars via an override effectively allows us to catch up with the rates of inflation seen over the past several years at both the state and country level. Again, the cuts outlined here are depicted at $500,000. If more are needed, simply take these amounts and double them. Without an additional boost, next year's override amount will be even higher, at a rate closer to $1.6 million at today's projections. Please keep in mind that there are two debt payments we make for the schools, and while the estimate is shown just to show the compounded impact which would occur year to year, we have no way of knowing what the actual final debt payments will be for the Minuteman Building and the older high school debt which we're still paying on. It's possible that the numbers are higher in some areas, including for insurance and risk management. Layoff, the closure of Town Services, reductions in services also contribute to higher insurance rates. Therefore, we're projecting a deficit closer to $6.5 million. At that point, there will be little to no staff or programs or operations left to make up last year. And perhaps more alarmingly, we are in the exact same place as we are now, next year, for you as residents and for us as staff. In terms of implications to the average taxpayer, if the budget as presented here passes, the following charge provided a rough estimate of a tax-- following charge provided a rough estimate of a tax implication outlined by home valuation. For example, a home valued at $550,000 will see an increase for the year of a little over $500, $43 a month, or $1.42 a day. My good friend Dick Trussell tells me it's a donut a day. I recognize there has been a lot of information, so please allow me to summarize. We are unbalanced. No pun intended. Our revenues do not cover our expenses, yet our expenses directly coordinate to your standard of living, your quality of life, the education of our youngest residents, and the care for our oldest. It keeps our streets safe, it keeps our people connected through a shared sense of purpose and shared experiences. The bottom line is we haven't kept up with our rates of inflation. If we used one, we have used $1.1 million over the past two years in free cash to balance our budgets. Expenses are up 19%, not because of bad planning or negligence, but because they are tied to utilities and other non-discretionary costs. We are doing our best to keep costs down, to show what we spend and why we spend it. And I hope regardless of what your vote is this evening and on Monday, that we can continue to build upon the good work we have done over this past year. It has been challenging, and I have appreciated the opportunity to work in this community and for the Select Board, both past and present. Thank you for allowing me to be a piece of Lancaster.
Yes. Under time.
Let that be a lesson to everyone tonight.
I have it 17 minutes and eight seconds, but I have to admit I started two minutes late.
Still under.
And I'm not sure if it was announced initially, but the Select Board has recommended affirmative action on this in the Finance Committee. Now, regarding, if you're wishing to speak, as in the past, please step forward to the microphone, whether it's here or in either one of the other rooms. Announce yourself, where you live, what your name is, and where you live. Please keep your comments on point, like, for example, on this article. This is not an opportunity to stand up, "I'm for an override, I guess an override that is on next week's vote," so please keep your comments to the article itself. And I know there's strong feelings both ways on this, so I'm going to ask if everyone who is wishing to speak, please make your way to the microphone, because as in the past, somebody is going to make a motion to move the article at some point, so if you're in line, I'll recognize you, and I'll try to be fair as far as who's speaking in the auditorium, and who's in the gym, and who's in the cafeteria.
Mr. Moderator, just, I would love to be recognized just for one clarification point prior to any comments, but I just wanted to let you know. I would love to be recognized first if possible.
As far as, last thing I had to announce, we have, everyone's been received a red and a green, I guess, voting pen. So it just makes counting or determining whether there's a majority that much easier. And with the exception of Article IV, which is two-thirds, well, the rest of the votes are majority vote.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I want to thank again the Town Administrator for a fantastic presentation this evening, but also for the incredible work that she and the team, along with the Finance Committee and all of the department heads have done to get us to this budget. It is, in all my years here, the most transparent budget process that we have had, and, which has led, rightly so, to an awful lot of discussion about the budget, which is good. Discussion and debate is very healthy. I wanted to discuss one item and bring to the town's attention that has really cooked up a lot in the last few days, which is the use of ARPA funding to help defray operational expenses. I see a lot of heads nodding, so people have been tracking this on the FaceSpace and all those fun social media pages. To give you a brief synopsis in the two minutes I have left, the town was given ARPA funding from the federal government as a part of the response to the COVID-19 pandemic. We have $2.4 million left of ARPA funding to use. This board and previous boards have discussed the use of those dollars and determined that one-time dollars are best used on one-time things, and as Kate laid out for you, there's a significant capital need, none of which is being addressed in the budget that we're considering this evening. So there was a period of time where the town operated under the assumption that we, because we did not see a loss of revenue, that we couldn't use those dollars for operating expenses. We still believe our policy decision, we still stand by our policy decision to use one-time dollars for one-time things, but a lot of people are asking the question of why aren't we using those dollars for operational expenses? Excuse me, he's handing me a note and I'm blind. Oh, sorry, $2 million remaining, not 2.4 remaining. The town had not proactively opted into a designation that would have allowed us to use, our understanding was, the town had not opted us into a designation that would allow us to use these funds for operating expenses. A towns person over the weekend or the last several days has flagged a document that indicates that someone did designate the town able to use money for operating expenses. The confusion comes from the fact that that person didn't work for the town, and at the time that they did it. And so we know there's a lot of confusion out there. Can we use it? Can't we use it? We're still getting some clarification on that since the person who designated us into the category that would allow us to use it for operating expenses was not actually authorized to do so. That being said, I hope that's clear as mud, so, thank you. That being said, it is still the policy position of this board that one-time dollars for one-time things, because as Kate pointed out, if we were to use $1.2 million of that ARPA money to fund this budget shortfall, next year the budget shortfall would be $1.6 million, and in the interim, our bond rating may have fallen, which makes the dollars we have to borrow for any construction of the new school and other capital projects likely our rate to be significantly higher. Okay, my time's up. I knew he'd tell me when it was. So I'm sure I clarified that for absolutely no one, including myself, but I gave it a shot, so, thanks. Yes, sir.
Now, Clifford, 861 George Hill Road. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This proposed budget builds on the large spending increases we funded with free cash last year, because the spending increases exceeded our taxation limit. Comparing this budget with our spending in fiscal year 22, the top 10 non-school department personnel funding increases grew by 805,000. That's a 20% growth rate over two years for our top 10 personnel expenses. We could reduce the growth rate of these top 10 personnel expenses by 400,000, and these expenses would still increase by 10% over two years. I've identified 475,000 of spending growth reductions in non-school personnel expenses that would still leave us with significant budget growth compared to fiscal year 22. I'm not talking about budget cuts, I'm talking about reducing the budget growth rate to a manageable level. I'm talking about living within our means. No reduction in services from 2022, even some growth. Our current spending growth rate will hurt young families and citizens on fixed incomes. Our funding for town services was fine in 2022. We can continue to increase funding from that level and improve services without bankrupting our taxpayers. I've been working on a real, excuse me, a real Plan B. My budget growth reductions should be reviewed and finalized through our process of public meetings with the Select Board, Finance Committee, Town Administrator, and town departments. We need a budget that respects all of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford. Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Ford, I live on Julie Little, Lancaster. I first would like to thank the Town Administrator Kate Hodges, and my Lancaster Finance Director Cheryl Garry, and the staffing boards and committees who put a tremendous amount of work into budget before us tonight. No one should be able to say that it wasn't transparent. We have gotten more information than we've ever gotten before. We've looked at the last couple of years, this current year, this difficult next year, and projected into the future. And I think it's important that we recognize all of the hard work from those people. We have gotten responsible budgets from all of the town departments. The problem we have in Lancaster is 45% of all landing buildings in Lancaster are tax-exempt. That's 8,800 acres. Add to that the fact that we have little or no commercial and industrial development, there is no way any city or town can adequately fund their budget under these conditions. We have to help ourselves. The time to say no to overrides in development is long-worn. While I am concerned about all departments, I'll speak of our potential public safety problem. We have mutual aid in this town, with our police, our fire, and our ambulance. If we cut those departments and can't meet our mutual aid agreement, their, other towns are not going to come to us, it's plain and simple. We're putting our firemen at risk, we're putting our ambulance people at risk, and our police officers at risk. I just don't think that is the way to go. We have to protect those people who are protecting us. On our ambulance, many people lost family and friends during the pandemic. We lost our mother. She needed several trips to the Lancaster hospital and the Lancaster ambulance. They respond quickly, night and day, and treated her with dignity and respect. Our family will be ever grateful to the Lancaster ambulance for what they did for our mother in her final days. And to think about cutting them is beyond my imagination. The consequences of these cuts can be disastrous. I don't know how we expect those people to protect us when we're not willing to protect them. As far as police goes, I don't think any town should have one officer on duty at any time. Police officers are being attacked across the country, in big cities and small towns, and I don't think any Lancaster police officer should be out there in the middle of the night by themselves. I'm also concerned that our cruisers need to be replaced. It's unfair to expect our officers to work with unsafe, undependable cruisers. They protect us 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We have to protect them, and it's responsibility of every citizen in town to protect our police officers. The DPW I consider...
Do you have the mic?
Okay. I will finish by saying, I sat through as a selectman the cuts when we didn't fund our budgets. It's not good. We can't expect the people on the stage to make it all better. And if we have to make cuts in July because we haven't funded our budget, I would suggest the first budget we cut is a complaint department. Because nobody's going to be happy to pay for his services, I wonder, they were used to because we had great service, and they won't be the same come July first. Thank you.
I know we have someone here, but I wanted to recognize David or Jesse, anybody making their way to the microphone?
Nobody at the microphone.
Nobody here.
No, not, okay, yes.
Denise Curley, 10111111. I have come before, come meeting before, stating that, you know, I didn't want increased taxes, because it was difficult for me to pay taxes, because I'm on a, you know, first income, I'm on a lot of it. But now, looking at our future, I think that this is an important step, because it's thinking in our future, it's thinking about getting out of where we are financially. It's the right step that we need to do to be in a better financial place than we are right now. I also want to say, no, I want to thank Kate Hodges and all of the Select people here, and all the department heads for the amazing work they have done to put this budget together. It has not been an easy thing for them to do. Like Kate said, it's not something that they want to do, is to impose more taxes on us, but we have to do this, because like Kate said, next year, it's going to be worse, we're going to have a bigger override. And I like the way my town's going, I like what's going on here, I like the services, I like the opportunity for seniors to go to the senior center and enjoy programming. I like people being able to go to the library and enjoy a program. I think the fact that the police department and social services are working together to help with the mental health issues in our town, that is amazing, that is so important for us to be able to have those two groups work together to help our community, especially seniors. As we know, with COVID, a lot of our seniors were isolated and needed, you know, that started some mental health issues with people. Now that we have social work here, and with the police department, they're working together, they're working with the folks in our town to help, to help their situation, to help them navigate through some issues with their mental health. I love that. I love the center, the center is vibrant and full of programming and laughter, and just so great to go there and be part of that whole center. And I appreciate, I appreciate Kelly, I appreciate Caitlin, and Kevin, everyone down here, because I think they have brought such an energy to our town, and they want to work with everybody in town, they want to bring the town together. And if we lose them, we lose the town. If we lose our services, we lose the town.
Please wrap up.
Okay. I'm just saying, I don't want to see us lose. So if we have to spend some money to get the most amazing people helping us to be the best town, then let's do that, let's not just say no.
Thank you, Ms. Harrow. Just checking with the other rooms, Jesse, anybody?
Nobody here.
David?
Nobody here.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, your own.
Hi there, I'm Joe Duramo, 127 Harvard Road. So I'm interested in understanding a little bit more about the ARPA unspent funds and our stabilization. Steve, I think, or somebody corrected Steve, saying that there's now $2.0 million left in the ARPA funds? Are you confirming that's correct?
2.040 something or other.
So Kate mentioned to spend down on the free cash, but I'm curious about the stabilization fund, what dollars are in that fund right now?
Sorry, clarify, the ARPA funds have $2,47,751.43, and they're getting the stabilization you asked for?
I'm interested in knowing what the stabilization fund amount is currently.
How much? 1.8 million, although, standby.
I'm sorry, hi, well, you can't see me. Okay, well, then I'm... 1.8 is in our stabilization, but that actually is one of the primary factors in determining our creditworthiness, or what I was telling you about the bond rating, so, that, when I was going over that slide and how that's determined. And just for the record, the stabilization fund was developed, what, 15, 15 years ago, Cheryl?
2007.
In 2007, when Cheryl came, there was a reimbursement for a borrowing, and it was about $1 million, and Cheryl put it in a stabilization account, and there's been a lot of talk about it. The only increase from the... been a lot of talk about it. The only increase from the million to the million eight of what we have today is because it's accrued interest. We have never, ever put $1, one penny into the stabilization account. And so the idea of taking it out, we don't have a track record of replacing it.
As I understand it, I've seen on social media that our stabilization fund is more than Stowe and Bolton combined. I'm not sure if you have updated to that, but it's a fact that's been put out there, apparently validated through, you know, town finance details from those other towns. But, okay, so the, so there are significant dollars there, and there's significant unspent dollars for the fund. And it sounds like there's just a policy from the select board against using the ARPA funds for operational budgets?
I can, as I stated earlier, yes, it's a policy decision to use the one-time dollars with the many millions of dollars in unspent capital projects, underdressed capital projects, and the capital needs out there. The, the policy decision was to use one-time dollars on one-time things. Because putting it into this budget hole will just put us into a longer budget problem next year.
Do we know when that decision was made? Was there a vote in a select board meeting to determine that?
We discussed it. I know at the beginning of the budget process, we'd have to get you the date that we discussed it. And we started this budget process, as you all remember, in July. So sometime late summer, probably, early. I would have to get to that date, yeah. It's always been the working principle of this board that that's what we would use the ARPA money for.
Okay. Legally, the town is able to use those funds for operating budgets?
As I said, it remains to be seen because the person who indicated that we wanted to opt into that option was not a town employee when they opted in. Other towns, we did opt into that, yes, they could legally use it. There's a circumstance under which we could legally use it. We're just not certain that we're in there. Regardless, it is not the fiscal decision that this board recommends because it is not good fiscal planning for the town, as Kate laid out. It would again lead us to a $1.6 million override next year. We'd have $1.2 million less to spend on capital dollars next year, and we'd be, and we'd probably have a lower bond rating and more of an interest rate to pay on capital projects. So on all economic and fiscal categories, it would be a bad deal.
So you're saying there's a cloud over that, the ARPA fund usage?
I don't, I think it's crystal clear to me that the ARPA funds will be used, at least from this board's perspective, on capital projects, as we've been discussing for nearly a year.
But they, but by, but according to the Lancaster submission to the federal government...
Which was a submission made by someone who had no authority to do that submission.
Will the town intend to undo that?
We just discovered it, so we're working on it. Yep. We're working on getting clarity on it first. It doesn't, the reason why it doesn't impact the policy decisions of this board, which was to recommend ARPA money, one-time dollars, be used for one-time things. So I understand that it's confusing, but it was, even if we had checked that box long ago, it would still be the recommendation of this board to use one-time dollars for one-time things. So we can get all the clarification on how and why and who did what and when and why, but it remains the same, that we would still recommend using one-time dollar for one-time things. Because again, it would take $1.2 million away from capital money and set us up for a $1.6 million override need for next year with likely a lower bond rating and higher interest rates for our borrowing. Again, all bad fiscal measures.
So that all sounds very compelling.
Thank you. I thought, I was better the third time around, I guess.
I'm still concerned about moving ahead with an override budget. And I'd like to give townspeople an opportunity to take a different perspective on it, to use our ARPA funds and potentially the stabilization fund to fund the amount of the override. And so I have a proposed amendment that I'd like to put forward. Let's see what the motion is.
Oh, sir, before you make the, we, to clarify a question you had earlier about when we, we approved a capital budget in August that included using ARPA funds for capital. So we would have to rescind that vote. So just to get clarification on when this board took that action. It's his meeting. It's the moderator's meeting. I just thought you had a question for me. That's fine.
Mr. Moderator, do you have any feedback for me? I can't hear. Do you have any feedback for me on this?
Can we hear it first?
So the, what has been presented to me, it hasn't been seconded yet, but I'm just going to read it. And there are some issues with it. It says the operating budget of $27,0938 shall be funded in part by a $1.2 million allocation or transfer from the town's stabilization account and/or ARPA funds, with the mix of those funding sources determined by the Lancaster Select Board. So there's really not specificity in there. And while I'm going to ask, perhaps, I'm going to give you a minute to perhaps change that language to be a little bit more specific, much more specific. And the town stabilization fund, I'm understanding that requires a two-thirds vote. So we got a problem there.
Two-thirds?
Yes.
Yes. If that is the motion on the floor, it would require two-thirds to pass.
So that would require a two-thirds vote. And so I'm going to ask you perhaps to just take, I'll give you a minute to take a look at it. I do recognize someone else is in the gym. So I'll give you a minute to perhaps change that, and then we'll take a look at it again. Fair enough?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So you're not losing your place, but I'm just going to give you a minute to work on the language. And then now we're going to recognize, this is Bailey, I believe, in the gym.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes. Hi, thank you. My name is Mara Bailey. I live on Moffett Street, 153 Moffett Street. I'm just wondering, we've received some mailings to our home address over the last week or so. One of them was...
A little closer to the microphone.
So we've, sorry. We've received some mailings to our, yeah. I didn't know if that was me with the feedback. We've received some mail from, I think, and I'm not sure. I guess my question is, who is, I'm wondering if it's the town that's sending the mailings or if it's another organization. One of them is www.lancasterbudgetsense.com, and then there's Citizens for a Stable Lancaster. I'm assuming this is not the town, but I wasn't sure if lancasterbudgetsense.com was affiliated with the town or not. It was, it's just unclear, and some of the information is contradictory. So...
Mr. Moderator.
I just wanted to ask where that information was coming from and if you could clarify at all, if you know.
I cannot, but Mr. Carrigan seems to have an opinion on that.
I more than have an opinion on it. Neither one of those mailings came from the town of Lancaster.
Great.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Actually, yeah, well, one of them did use town data that conveyed, yeah, so, which was, well, regardless, one did use accurate town data, but neither one came from the town.
Okay, Mr. Duramo. So while I'm going to speak to town council, I'm going to read to you what has been submitted anyways. It says the operating budget of $27,0938 shall be funded in part by a $1,200,000 allocation or transferred from ARPA funds. Now, I have to, then I'm going to ask somebody to, so everyone's clear, what is ARPA funds? If you know, and I'm not setting you up, I just...
Act. Act.
So, so are you making that motion now?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. Now I'm going to wait for a minute. I'm going to confer with town council. Thank you for your indulgence. And rather than me trying to repeat what town council said, I'm going to recognize Attorney Freed.
Thank you. Hello. I'm Ibrah Freed from Myers and Harrington. I work at town council's office. So the motion that we have in front of us creates some ambiguity as to what would happen if it passes. The traditional language that we see when we're dealing with operating budgets includes the phrase raise and appropriate, which allows us to tax residents. Here we have just funded. Funded can mean a lot of different things, transfer from stabilization, transfer from free cash. So there's ambiguity there with the funded component. The other issue is that ARPA funds pursuant to federal law are controlled by the select board. Town meeting cannot require, authorize, or direct an appropriation of ARPA funds. So there's additional ambiguity with that.
Okay. So hold on. So I'm going to ask, do you want to, again, attempt to address that? Because the way it is now, I don't think we can move forward this amendment.
So at the beginning, the opening sentence of Article 1 says to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate by taxation or transfer from available funds. That's the language that I'm using as a foundation for the use of these ARPA funds.
Okay, hold on.
So, sorry, I was having a little trouble hearing, but the, the language we like to see when we are approving budgets is to vote to raise and appropriate by taxation or transfer from available funds. Funded, funded creates, from a legal perspective, creates some ambiguity. That's just a term of art. The second issue is the ARPA issue. ARPA funds are controlled by the select board. Town meeting cannot appropriate ARPA funds.
If that's the legal opinion, then this can't go forward.
You're withdrawing your...
Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, your own.
Victoria Petracca, 67, Woodland Meadow Drive. I just wanted to make a couple of brief comments. I've never seen a more professional and transparent budget presentation since I've lived in Lancaster. So thank you to our town administrator and finance team. The second thing I wanted to say is that there's concern about seniors and folks on fixed incomes. And I just want to make sure that everyone understands that we have an article tonight to address that. So I see these two kind of going hand in hand, Article 1 and Article 16, which makes me really super happy because we can talk about the tax relief possibilities for people on fixed income under that. So I think it's really key to understand that. And I really want to make sure that folks understand, if we don't pass this tonight, if we vote no and this doesn't get through, we're going to dig a deeper hole for ourselves and face a worse problem next year. And I think that that's a daunting possibility. And I would just really encourage my fellow residents to vote yes on Article 1 and 16 as a package. And let's not make our situation worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Just checking, no one at the podium in either of the other rooms?
Nobody in the cafeteria.
Nobody here.
I can't hear Jesse. I think there's a no. Is that correct? Okay. David?
Nobody in the gym.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
George France, 13, Mountain View Drive. I want to thank Mr. Duramo for his attempt to come up with a method of not having to use funds. And the idea of avoiding the override is certainly attractive. Even, even if we don't touch the stabilization fund, but simply use $1.2 million out of ARPA, I understand you prefer that to go to capital expenses, et cetera. But if we did that, it would, it would get us out of the hole, overweight. If we go ahead with the override, what would happen is that there would be a small increase in the tax rate from 17.9% to 18.88%. That would mean that we wouldn't be faced with a budget override in the following year. And that tax increase turns out to be about between $500 and $700 per year for most families. Not an insignificant amount, but I would often, that's probably, you know, $50 to $60 a month for, let's say, one dinner out a month. So I respectfully submit that the best approach is to, is to vote the article positively, Article 1. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dave Mallett, 2748 North Main Street, regarding what they were having in the stabilization of Lancaster. I feel that the other options that we could have regarding spending down free cash, spending other places, if we look at our total budget, which is $27 million, and we look at our stabilization, stabilization fund, it wouldn't even fund one month of that budget. And if you look at any financial program, a lot of people want to, they talk about belt tightening, personal belt tightening and things like that. So we really don't have a lot of spare money. And the result of not actually going forward with this is that very likely, we'll see, I calculated a $980,000 increase in the cost of a high school. For every person in Lancaster, why would you want to trade a 30-year, $980,000 increase in, because of the cost of a $40 million debt that you're going to have to pay? I calculated it at three and an eighth percent. And I got that number because at a select board meeting and finance meeting, they mentioned that the next level for us, if we don't have enough money and we destabilize, is that we're going to end up with a three to three and a half percent. So the 980 number that I came up with is actually a conservative number, all things being equal in if our, the financial situation of the country as well. We've seen banks getting foreclosed in and being taken over by the government. We've seen other issues. So that number could be actually low. So I think it's best for us to control our situation because if you look at the fact that we're in the show where we're in a three-town thing, if two of the towns vote for and one against, then the entire population of the three towns, we don't control whether or not we're going to have that $40 million debt. And it's very likely going to come. I think the smart, the most stable situation for us is to not turn ourselves into a situation where we're, instead of getting services, we're going to cut services and also spend that money within one or two years on a long-term interest, when in fact, over the next several years, we might be able to have an underwrite. And that seems to be a much smarter move. So that's all I can tell you.
Thank you.
Okay, yes.
Margaret McAlley's having too much tailing. I'd like a big motion to move the question.
Yes, it's been seconded. Sorry. Any discussion on moving the article? All right, any discussion on moving the article? Person at the microphone in the gym, are you, discussion on the article?
Yes, I just had.
Or, on the motion to move the article?
I just had a quick question.
I can't hear you.
I just had a quick question about the.
It's about the?
Yes, it's about the article.
About the amendment? Are you about the order, about the motion to move the article?
It's about the article, not about the move.
No, I know, that's not, that's not pertinent now. When the, I, I've been checking periodically with the.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry.
It was actually a point of clarification, more than anything.
Okay, go ahead.
So, the last speaker mentioned that the, with the skill, the building project, if two towns vote for it, the third town has to pay for it, and actually, with capital projects, that's not true, is my understanding. One town can disapprove of that capital project, and the capital project is therefore disapproved.
No.
Is that correct?
I have no idea, anyone? So, the risk is now going off, but the superintendent from show is here, so I'm gonna recognize Mr. Downing, and if you could.
Thank you.
Just address that question. I know you're up on the next, next.
Thank you, moderator, I just wanna put a couple of points out to the record. That is, yes, the building project does require approval of all three towns. It is outlined in Chapter 71, 16, Provision D, the Mass General Law. The other point of record I wanna make is that the number of $40 million has been mentioned several times this evening, I wanna tell you that is not accurate. Estimation numbers will be provided in the community of the school building committee meeting on May 17th, which, the link to that meeting is on the show, the website, and will be provided. I'll just remind everyone in the room, better?
Better.
You're on my knees.
Mr. Moderator, can we move the question?
I'll just remind everybody that the selection for schematic design that went forward was option 4D.
We're, we're in the middle of a vote, so.
Yeah, and at the time, the numbers that were expressed were approximately in the 175 to 185 million for whole project.
Thanks, thanks.
Funding will be determined May 17th.
Thank you.
Or estimation.
Thank you, okay. All right, those wishing, who, we have, again, we're gonna try to use these, if you're in favor of halting debate, move the question, you're in favor of greenish colored card, all those in favor of halting debate? And just a quick, it is two-thirds, so keep that up for a second, please. And I can see the, the people sitting in the gym, I cannot see the people sitting in the cafeteria, the other camera. Jesse, is it a?
It is more than two-thirds.
More than two-thirds. All right, and those opposed. Okay, I'm just gonna try to do this by, okay, so seeing a green card up, yeah, no, it has to be a red card now. So, I count one, two, three, four, five. Okay, so with that number, and I see none in the gym, that counts. So, now we're going to vote on budget. So, we're gonna try this again by the, by the visual, so all those in favor of approving Article 1, please raise your green card. And Jesse, I need some help, I can't see the audiences. What's, what's it look like, hold on, the camera's moving? Okay, thank you. And those opposed? Okay, I estimate 50 at most, so that does pass. Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator, I move to reconsider the vote taken under. Second. There's been a motion to reconsider that vote, and so, if you were in favor of it before the first vote, you would want to vote no. So, you don't wanna reconsider it, you wanna lock it in, and it cannot be brought up later in this meeting. So, they, yeah, they can't hear you. Mr. Moderator, yeah, they couldn't hear you. All right, we'll try this again, sorry. So, if you were in favor of the article, you wanna vote against it now, saying that I don't wanna bring it back before this meeting this evening, and that would put an end to the discussion on this, so that when you go home to check on the Celtics game score, and somebody brings it up for reconsideration, it could not be brought forward. So, those in favor of, in favor of reconsidering, please raise your green card. Green card. Okay, those who keep it up, please. Okay, so I. So, I count seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. And I see somebody, I'm not sure if that green card is in your pocket, Mr. Sinrowski, or is. All right, thank you. And anybody in the gym? And in, in the cab?
Zero.
Zero.
All those opposed to reconsidering the article, clearly, that is not unanimous, but pretty close. All right, thank you. So, now we have the easy article out, the way we believe on, to Article 2. Yes.
I would like to make a motion to move Article 21 from the end of the warrant to be heard now.
Second. So, I would encourage everyone to stay, but I can see people. There are critical work still to be done, folks. So, it is a majority vote, and, okay, so it is a majority vote, and the motion was to move Article 21 to be heard now. And I heard that that was coming, I gave Mr. Wilson a heads up on that, and he has made his way to the front, so I'm going to recognize Mr. Wilson. Do we have to vote to move it? Hey, Bill? We have to vote to move it. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't call for the vote to take another. So, all those in favor of moving Article 21 to be heard now, please raise your green And those opposed? Perhaps 10, it does, here, so that does pass. I think so, but I would say. Either way. That's what I want to vote for. Okay, Mr. Wilson, yes, please. And if you need to adjust that, like, we're raising.
Do I just say next slide?
Yes, it's your.
Yes, your call.
I did have the first slide, there's one missing. Before this one.
All right, we're trying to get the slides for Article 21 in the queue now.
So, it looks like the first slide is missing, but I can, I can work with this, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, my name is Russell Wilson, I live at 4 Highfield Drive, and this is a citizen's petition. So, if you're not familiar with citizen's petitions, I think we had a three dozen signatures on the petition of people who were interested in proposing this at this town meeting, and I will be the person presenting it to you. So, you can skip to my next slide if you like. My, this is an article that would expand, would begin the process of expanding the select board to five members. It wouldn't actually do anything immediately, it would just enable you all next year to take a final vote when you go to town election on whether you want to expand the select board to five members. And it's a process that would take two years. So, what would happen is this year, at this meeting, you would approve this article. Between meetings, between town meetings, the select board would get legislative approval to, to do this, and then next year, at the ballot, you would give it final approval. And then in 2025, instead of just electing one selectman, you'd elect three to give us a total of five. So, starting off with this slide, how many select board members do we currently have? I think you probably mostly know that we all have three right now, and the state allows us to have three, or five, or seven. And of the 292 communities that have select boards, 143 have three, including Berlin, Bolton, and Sterling, right next to us. 148 communities have five, including Clinton, Harper, Hudson, Ludenberg, and Stone near us. And there's one community in Massachusetts that has seven selectmen, or select board members, and that's Wakefield. The next slide, please. So, how do we compare to the other towns that have three or five select board members? Of the towns with three, there are actually 143, and we are, we have a larger population than 116 of them. So, we are among the largest towns that still have three selectmen. Of the 148 towns that have five, obviously that includes towns up to the largest towns that operate with a town style of government, we have a larger population than 23 of them. So, we, we would be in good company with the other towns with five selectmen. Next slide, please. Now, why is, why would it be a good idea to change to five selectmen now, select board members, as we call them in Lancaster? We have the population to support that now. We have the chance to put more residents to work for us, and in these elections where we typically, we've typically gotten two candidates, there's no reason we can't welcome both of those candidates to be new selectmen and do work for the town. With three members, right now, any two members forms a quorum, and this causes a couple problems. The members aren't really allowed to work together on town business between meetings because it would be an open meeting law violation, and they can't even pick a partner from their board to work on a project between meetings. With three members, it also requires a unanimous vote to approve a permit. So, someone who goes before the select board to get an earth product removal permit, they actually need a unanimous vote, or their permit will be denied right now. If there's five, a super majority is three, or less than two. And most boards in town already have five members. I think there are a couple exceptions, Board of Public Works and Board of Health, I think are among the last boards that still have three members. Even when we form temporary committees now, you'll see five or seven members on them. Next slide, please. And I guess I should add, five members will do a lot to make a board that works together. For residents, it's gonna be more likely that you'll see a member who represents your viewpoint, maybe someone you know from other organizations, or someone from your neighborhood. And for the members, they'll get more of a chance to get more input from different people, and there'll be more of a chance that there are people with different expertise on the board with them to share things with them. All right, so if you approve this tonight, and the select board gets the legislative approval to move forward, what will we see next year? This is a picture of the ballot that appeared in Milton. This process we're following was taken from the process that Milton followed. And they had a question on their ballot that read, shall an act be passed by the general court entitled, an act passed by the general court entitled, an act increasing the membership of the board of selectmen of Milton be accepted in that case? It's just a yes or no vote, and if you approve that next year, then it would be official, it'd be a, a five-member select board town. Next slide, please. Now, if you approve that next year, what would it look like on the ballot when we actually expand the board by picking? So, in 2025, regardless of what we do, one of the selectmen will be up for election. So, all we would do is we'd pick two more that year to give it a total of five. And the picture on the screen there is how it looked on Milton's ballot a few years ago when they went through this process. They had a list of selectmen who wanted to, or who were willing to run, and you picked, they picked three from the list. The select board member who received the most votes served a three-year term. The select board member who received the second most votes served a partial term for two years. And the select board member who received, or the candidate who received the third most votes served a one-year term. And that set up the, the rotation going forward of five select board members with two approved most, most years, and then every three years, you approve one, or you elect one. And that would do it. After that, we'd be a five, we'd officially have five selectmen who serve in 2025. Next slide, please. So, as I said, this, if you approve it tonight, doesn't immediately make any changes for the town, it just sets up that vote next year where you can make a final decision. So, you'd have a whole year to think about it. In the meantime, the, the Red Sox will win the World Series, the Patriots will win the championship again, and presumably the Shova will also win the championship again. So, if you do have more questions, we have a website set up, it's www-expandarselectboard.com. Has a few answers to frequently asked questions that won't help you tonight, because you probably don't have reception yearly, but I will put updates on there if this does move forward as to where things stand. And my contact information's on there, too. So, thank you very much.
Was it seconded? I didn't hear a second. Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Carey? So, at this annual town meeting last year, I was, did not have the honor of sitting up here, I was, I was down as a citizen, this body asked the select board to create a government study committee to look at issues similar to this, to whether or not we should have a charter, what boards and commissions should be elected and appointed, compare ourselves through benchmarking with other communities to see how and if we wanted to adjust how our town is governed. That committee has been appointed, has been active, we are working hard, and I thank the members of the committee for doing that work. Questions like this are issues that a charter commission or others could tackle. The responsibility of the government study committee that was tasked by all of you to answer the question to the select board, should we have a charter commission, is still doing that work, and they will make that recommendation one way or the other. I don't wanna presuppose how I would rather a three to five board, select board, I, I would rather that process, though, take, take its natural course. I will say, we have had to reduce the, the, the number of people on the. I will say, we have had to reduce the number of people on the conservation commission because we can't recruit people for that. We have a number of open boards and commissions. We have a number of races on the ballot that you will see on Monday when you go and vote on May 8th, between 7:00 and 8:00 a.m., or 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. A lot of one people running for office. So I would caution that, should we move forward with this, it won't be as easy as getting folks to run. So what I would encourage is that you, the legislative body of the town, tasked this board, and through them, the government study committee, with the responsibility of making a recommendation. My request to you all is to vote this citizens petition, although well-intended, down and let that process take place, which is why the select board has a negative determination as a recommendation on the warrant.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Schumacher Hardy, 90, Redstone Hill Road. I have mixed thoughts on this, and I wasn't entirely sure. I'm still perhaps not entirely sure which way I want to go. I see advantages to diversifying our select board. We've had some very narrow and tight contests, and this has sometimes hampered a wider discussion and, I think, a fuller due process for the town. But there's also challenges of finding people who are willing to fill these positions. So I see there's challenges on all sides. I'm happy to hear that if we do vote this tonight, it's not a binding decision. We have a whole year to explore it and discuss it. And the committees that Selectman Kerrigan mentioned can continue to proceed, and we can give it a final vote next year, whatever way we decide. So I'm in favor of opening the door, and would encourage people to say yes to this thoughtful petition and to begin a wider process throughout the year of discussion and debate as to whether or not we want to take a fuller step next year with the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to recognize there was a person in the microphone in the gym. Yes, sir.
Randy Jones, Winslow Street. It sounds like a good idea, but like was just mentioned, we've had a difficult time filling positions. And we've had select board members get the position by nobody running against them. And I prefer having a choice. If we had lots of people that kept running for positions all the time, I'd maybe be interested in it, but I like to be able to have two people running for the position so that we can see different ideas and make a decision based on choice, not by whoever's left.
Thank you. Now, I know that you were the presenter, Mr. Wilson, so I want to... And there are two people behind you, so if they're asking you a question... No, I just want to give you ample time, but perhaps there are questions. You may want to withhold yours three-minute rebuttal till the end, so, next.
Victoria Petracca, 67, Woodland Meadow Drive. There is no question in my mind that a five-member board is a great idea. I think Lancaster's at the point where we would benefit from five members on our select board, and I think that a lot of the good reasons for that were presented tonight in the petition. However, I don't think it should be done through a citizens petition. I think it needs to be done with our town council, who's right there on the stage. I think it needs to be fully vetted. I think we need to do it the right way, the careful way. And I don't understand how doing this tonight through a citizens petition buys us time to then go think about it. I'd like to let the people that we asked to think about it do their job in the government study committee. I'd like to see town council involved, and I just want to see it done the right way. And so, although I think it's a great idea, I don't think it should be done in this format, and I would vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Anne Ogilvy, and I reside at 4 Turner Lane. And I'm a member of the government study committee. And one of the great, I guess, my great experiences I've had this year working on that committee was working with a partner on that committee to do a benchmarking survey of similar-sized towns in Massachusetts to understand the qualities of those towns and the different ways that they do things. And from that, I learned something I didn't know before, which was that one of the most frequent things that come out of the government study committee is a recommendation for a larger board, for a five-person board. It's a very common evolution of the size of a select board, most often to adjust for the size of the town and the amount of the work that has to get done. I think we've all seen how our select board has to work throughout the course of the year, the number of different things that they have to confront, all of the different questions that they get asked, and the important matters that go before them. And I'm in favor of adding this question onto the ballot next year. So I'll be voting for this tonight because I'd like to see this go before the voters of the town. I think that's probably the most appropriate way we could decide anything in this town, the most democratic. Not everybody attends town meetings, but more people vote at the ballot than they do anywhere else. So I'd love to see this get voted through tonight. I'd love to see it get on the ballot and get approved. My Nana, who's been gone a while now, would always say, "Many hands make light work", and I think that that is very appropriate to this situation. I'd like for our select board members to have the same opportunity that I've had on a larger committee to work side by side with a committee member and discover things that help the town, move the town forward, help us make decisions. If we have a board where two people can't even talk to each other because of the open meeting law, I think it really hampers the democratic process and our ability to gather good information and make good decisions. Thank you very much. And I want to thank Russ Wilson for putting this forward, and everyone who signed the petition.
Thank you. Yes. You're up.
Hi, Rebecca Young Jones, 94, Barnes Court. I want to support this warrant, article, because it seems that if we... Well, we don't need to delay on this, which I believe the government study committee already has looked at this, thought it was a good idea, and so we should do it now so we can vote on it next year. Otherwise, we're just delaying the adding of the seats for another year. And we need more people to do the work in this town. It's obvious that we're facing some hard times, especially this year with hard news, and we need more people to help us understand how our town is doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator. Sorry, point of clarification, just as chair of the government study committee, we have not taken a position on this issue. We actually actively did not take a position on this issue. So I don't want to leave folks with the impression that we looked at it and made a determination one way or the other. So I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
David Mallett, 2748 North Main Street. So this was an excellent presentation, and it seems like almost a no-brainer. But I'd just like to ask, if it's possible, Mr. Wilson, how many towns did this through a citizens petition?
So the answer is, I don't know.
So Mr. Wilson's answer is he does not know. And that leads me to, even though all the information that he gave us tonight seems very, very positive, and I may well want to vote for this, right now, I think we're missing one thing. The select board is the major board of leadership in the town. And if we're going to change it, we should really think about it. And the word I'd use is deliberation. And a citizens petition signed by three dozen people doesn't give us any deliberation. It's true, as I am a government study committee member, that the thought was brought up in the government study committee. However, we have not done any deliberation or any real looking at it. And I don't think we should change a board. When I'm looking at Mr. Wilson's statistics, I noticed that almost half the towns have not changed. And there must be reasons for that. I don't think that any of the cons were in Mr. Wilson's presentation, and I don't think any of us know what any of the cons are, any of the reasons to really say, "Should we or shouldn't we do this?". All we got is a really good "should we do it", and I'm afraid that that is, for me, is too quick. Let's let the process happen. Is it going to be a big difference in Lancaster if we wait a year or two and have a determination by a committee that's actually studied it? I don't think it's going to harm anything to wait. However, if we quickly go into something on such a major board without deliberation, I think that could be a big problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Sorry.
I just want the clapping to stop. All right, so go ahead.
Sheila Mallett, 2748 North Main Street. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to also make a point. Evidently, presently Bolton, I believe, is a three-board select board, but I believe there's only two members right now. The other thing I thought was really kind of neat about Bolton, though, in addition to their select board, they have an advisory board of six residents. And I think, you know, just kind of tagging on to Dave's point, I think we really do need to study what's going to work for our town best. And I think we all want representation and having more people that are involved in the decision-making, advising even the select board, I think is a really thing, a good thing that we should really think about. And I do believe that this should be a no on the citizens petition. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone in the gym making their way to the microphone, and Jesse in the cafeteria, anybody?
Nobody here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. So this is Russ Wilson again. I could just provide one statistic that I thought was interesting, because I wondered, too, what happened to the towns that switched to five selectmen? Did they have trouble filling those seats? And if you look at Milton, who was the town we took this from, they, last year, for the two seats that were open for them last year, they actually had five candidates last year. And I guess it's just subjective. You can interpret it how you are. But to me, it seems a little less intimate to not have one person against another for one seat. I think if you look at our ballot this year, one of the seats that had... One of the positions that had several seats open was the finance committee. And we actually have a wealth of candidates this year. I think there's five or six this year for the two seats that are available. And I think that would be a big improvement, rather than just one person pitted against the other each year. We could have a field of candidates to pick from, and everyone would be trying to appeal to everyone, rather than something that might be more divisive. And so, if I did make it clear, I'm also on the government study committee. I think we have nine members on that committee. It's pretty big. And I do hope that we're able to talk about this in the next year on that committee. I think with a year, we'll be able to spend time discussing this and give feedback to the town. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator. Hold on, there's somebody at the microphone in the gym, so I'm going to recognize her, Mrs. Bailey.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would just like to move the vote forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
So it's been moved and seconded, and all in favor of moving, stop debate and move the article. Thank you for rotating the camera there, and all those opposed. I counted one no in the gym, so I think that clearly passes. So now, we're going to vote on the article. Now, I'm going to make one comment, only because I can see how the meeting is likely going to go, and somebody's going to want to make a motion to reconsider. So I'm laying the groundwork that if you are... You have to be in the prevailing vote to bring a motion to reconsider. If it failed, and you voted against it, and you're trying to bring it, and clearly, I can't keep an eye on everyone, so make yourself painfully obvious if you are positioning yourself to make a motion to reconsider. So, all those in favor of the article as presented, please raise your green card. I think there's going to be a counter vote, but let's see, all those opposed, just to get... All right, I think the prevailing vote, but I'm going to ask for the yeses again, and if the counters would, please count those votes. And keep them up until the counter has gone by, please.
We have seven in the gym.
We have 12 in the cafeteria.
Tell me that again, please.
In the cafeteria?
Yes.
We have 12.
12 in favor?
Yes.
Okay. And in the gym? David, can you count? Is there a counter in there?
Seven in the gym.
Seven in favor in the gym. All right, so we have the yeses, but now I need all the noes. If you're voting no, please raise your red card, and the counters again are going to count them. All right, I'm going to... Okay, your no votes have been counted. So I was asked to announce how many were yeses in the auditorium. So there were 91. I would typically announce all of the votes yes and all the votes no at the end. Once I know it, but just disclose it. Okay, David, first, how many nos in the gym?
38 in the gym.
30?
38, 38.
Okay. And Jesse?
10 nos.
10 nos. So in this room, 125 voted against. 10 in the cafeteria and 38 in the gym. So that is 173 against. And 110 in favor. So... Okay, I'm going to ask you, did you vote?
I voted yes. I voted in the affirmative. Just so I can make a motion. Don't want to confuse anyone. Oh. Never mind. He voted.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider.
He voted. I made a mistake. He voted the prevailing side.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider.
And you voted? No. So that was the prevailing vote. Is there a second? Now, again, if you voted in favor of it, then you want the reconsideration. If you voted no against it, you don't want the reconsider. So it's kind of like you're voting opposite of how you originally voted. So those in favor of reconsidering the article, please raise your yes vote. Yes, I'm going to have town council. Yes, I'm gonna have Town Council. Hold on, hold on.
So the motion fails, one hundred and ten to one seventy-three. Motion was made to reconsider. That means if the motion to reconsider passes, we would open up a debate again on the main motion and take another vote. If the motion to reconsider fails, then we would move on to the next article. Does that clarify it?
Okay. Go ahead.
Point of order in Keenridge, 21 Mill Street Extension. So if we voted no on the article, then we wanna vote no to reconsider. Okay? Right?
Okay. So the point of order and with Town Council, those in favor of reconsidering and bringing it back before the body for further discussion. And those against reconsidering? Okay, so that clearly passes. Okay, thank you. Now, if, hold on a second. And if anybody was wondering why Mr. Ford had approached me, I will tell you it was for probably the most humanitarian effort. And in other times, we have recognized people who have given service to the town and who have passed away. And at the risk of not including somebody, Jim was saying that, you know, he didn't want to offend anybody by not including them, but he did wanna make note of two longtime volunteers to the town. Mark Finity had passed away and he was on the planning board for a long time. And Greg Jackson recently passed away and he was on the Conservation Committee for a long time. So just thank you, Jim, for pointing that out. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Adam Tussle, 46, Moffett Street, request to skip forward to Article 10.
What is it, to skip?
Skip forward to Article 10, please.
So you're saying that you want Article 10 to be moved up? Okay. And that was seconded. All in favor, is there any discussion on it? Okay, all in favor of taking Article 10 out of order and bringing that forward now? Okay, please keep the green card up if you are in favor. Okay, those opposed? Okay, so that clearly passes. So now my condolences to the proponents for Article Two, but now we're gonna move to Article 10. And I am aware that there is a motion to amend it.
Point of order?
I'm gonna recognize Mrs. Laken-Servie.
Do I need to read the whole article?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you.
Can you, I don't think we can move to motion number 10 until motion number nine's been approved. That sets the budget for motion 10?
Article nine and 10 are for Community Preservation Act, but they're totally independent of one another.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay. Article 10 is from the Community Preservation Committee. And I have an amendment to it. I'm gonna add one sentence at the end. It reads, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate funds from the Community Preservation Fund in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for the projects listed below from the fund designations below to be..." This is the amendment. "...each project application to be voted individually or to take any action relative thereto."
So is there...
Pardon me? The motion itself?
Okay, hold on. We're asking to repeat it.
The amendment is to be inserted in the second sentence after designations below each project application to be voted individually.
So move on the amendment.
All right, and somebody second that? Thank you.
Sorry. So is the goal that the town meeting votes each of these?
Yes.
Okay. So the moderator in his discretion can break up this, this motion into separate, into separate votes? And just go through it? You don't have to do it through this motion process, might be?
Okay. So essentially, we're asking to vote each one of those line items. I think there's seven of them. So I've asked, I knew this was coming, so I asked the presenter, we're gonna have the presentation under the same eight-minute summary total of time. And then we'll have discussion, but then we're gonna have, hopefully, an expeditions vote line by line. So I'd like to have the presentation, discussion. All the discussion takes place and then we're gonna vote item by item.
Mr. Moderator, I withdraw my motion of amendment then. Mr. Moderator, I withdraw my motion of amendment.
I think we've already amended.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yes. Okay, you're good to proceed.
Hello, everybody. Before we begin the CPA presentation, just one quick word. I wanna say a little bit more about Greg Jackson, who was one of the original members of the CPA Committee. He was a member from the start and was a tireless volunteer who clearly had a passion for community service. His passion combined with his work ethic and incredible attention to detail were key to laying the groundwork for CPA and really helping us get it off the ground. So if we could, just one more hand for Greg before we get into this slide presentation.
If we could have our slides start? Where are we? We're at the recap. The Community Preservation Act, or CPA, was adopted in Lancaster in 2020. Oh. This enabled our community to establish a fund that is specifically dedicated to historic preservation, open space recreation, and affordable housing. Next slide. Funds are collected as a 1% annual surcharge to our local property taxes, a little more than fifty dollars a year for the average Lancaster assessment, an exemption of the first hundred thousand of assessed property value, which applies to all, an exemption for qualified ownership of the Lancaster's low-income housing or low-income, moderate-income senior housing. So there are exemptions for that. A taxpayer receiving a regular property tax abatement or exemption will also receive a pro-rate reduction in surcharge. So for those who can't afford it, there's a provision. Next slide. The CPA Committee was formed in 2021. The community is charged with educating the community about CPA, soliciting submissions for CPA projects, oversight of CPA budgets, vetting project proposals for submission to the select board and being, and to be presented at the annual town meeting. Our current members are myself, Lenny Laken-Servie, Lynn Clark, Hendra Dickinson, Karen Silverthorne, Barbara Foster, and Margot Hammer Streeter. Next slide, please. So here's our report on the first year. Locally, we raised one hundred and fifty-seven, eight ninety-one. Our state contribution, because there's a state match component to this, the first round of funding was forty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. And the second round of the budget surplus gave us twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighteen, a total of sixty thousand, two thirty-three that we wouldn't have gotten from the state if we didn't participate in this program. That gave us a total of two hundred and eighteen thousand, one twenty-four funds to use for those specific areas. The Community Preservation Committee received seven project submissions, and of those, six were unanimously approved to be placed on the warrant. And they're listed in the warrant. And so you can see there's the ballfield resurfacing for forty-five thousand dollars. Is that the, I'm looking at the slides. Ballfield fencing, thirty-five thousand, dugouts, twenty thousand. Those are from recreation. Historic has a middle cemetery assessment at thirteen thousand, five hundred. The First Church, Bullfinch Church, Portico, twelve thousand, seven hundred. Library windows, twenty-five thousand, for a total of fifty-one thousand. And now we are, go through to the next slide. We, and wanna take that?
Yep. Hi, everybody. Lynn Clark. I'm just gonna go through the recreation projects at the speed of light. Kate doesn't think we can do it, but I think we can. So all, you're gonna notice that all three of these recreation projects are geared towards improving our ballfields, both at Thayer Field and at Mill Street. These ball, and as we considered projects, we really wanted to put forth projects that, that, you know, could be done right away, can make a visible change in our first year CPA. We obviously wanna do projects that are affecting the most people, most bang for the buck. So between those three fields, we have, we have girls softball, we have adult softball, and we have boys baseball. So we get a lot of folks traveling through there. And trust me when I say that these improvements are a long time coming. We've had volunteers working on those fields for many, many years. So, you know, they've been doing an awesome job, but something's gotta give. It's time for some substantial improvements. Next slide, please. So the first is to replace and repair fencing as needed at both fields, especially at Thayer Field. If you take a walk around there, you'll see that fencing is peeling off the ground. Kids can slide under that. They have slid under it. There's breaks in the fence everywhere. The gates are broken. Next slide, you'll see a few photographs of what I mean. So as you can see, that's not just an aesthetic issue, that's a safety issue. Next slide, please. Yep. Next slide is for the resurfacing of the ballfields. And when, when we say that, we mean that we're removing six to nine inches of material from the infield and replacing it, re-edging it. Again, this is work that has not been done in a very, very long time. Maintenance is done each year to the extent that we get those fields ready to play, but barely. So this project is to really do an overhaul that will, that will last the town for many years to come. Again, the conditions now, growing grass, standing water, there are safety issues associated with those and just general quality of play. Next slide, please. And finally, we have dugouts. Anybody who's been over there knows that the Little League field has dugouts. The girls softball slash adult softball fields do not. Mill Street does not. So, you know, to bring these fields up to snuff, to bring them up to par with what people are expecting, and quite honestly, to give girls softball the same facility that the boys baseball has, we're proposing... We are proposing the installation of dugouts at the softball field and at Mill Street. Okay. And now we're gonna move back to historic preservation.
We're doing tag team. The first one would be the slide for the cemetery. Which is, which one? Slide fourteen? Slide fourteen. The Middle Cemetery needs an assessment of what work needs to be done first. Assess and define and prioritize work required to restore the headstones and grounds of the cemetery. Historically significant site with graves of no less than thirty-seven Revolutionary War soldiers. As you can see, the stones are, a lot of them in pretty rough shape. The tree roots had been compromising the stones. And it's work that's long overdue. Yep, next slide. The next one is historic preservation for the Bullfinch Meeting House or the First Church at the Portico for twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars. Could you move the slide along? We need, the floor needs to be re-leveled and replace broken and missing bricks, re-point the granite steps. Lancaster's Fifth Meeting House is a national historic landmark. The Portico is widely used for community events and is perceived as a public space. Next slide. And the last historic project would be the Thayer Memorial Library Windows at twenty-five thousand dollars. Restoration would be two sets of the casement windows in the historic north wing. Restoration is crucial to avoid further damage and eventual need for replacement at a much higher cost. That's it.
Thank you. Now, if you would stay here for a moment because I'm gonna ask for all the discussion of any one of those six items. So I'm gonna ask for a discussion now and then I wanna expeditiously go through each line item and count the votes. So I don't want to address one fencing and have discussion on that. I'd like any discussion. I don't see anyone moving towards the microphone unless this gentleman is. All right, so, and I don't see anyone in the gym and the cafeteria. Anybody, Jesse?
Nobody here.
Okay.
No questions?
No questions. So we're gonna go down one by one. So just in favor, those in favor of the recreation fence allocation of thirty-five thousand dollars? Thank you. Those opposed? Okay, none here. And I don't, I see none in the others. So that one passes. Next is the vote for the ballfield resurfacing for forty-five thousand dollars. Okay, that passes clearly. I mean, there was no, no no votes. Now we're gonna call the vote for the ballfield dugouts. Those in favor, yes? Okay, those opposed? Okay, none, and that was for twenty thousand dollars. Now we have the historic Middle Cemetery, thirteen thousand, five hundred. Thank you. Thank you. Those opposed? Okay, I see none. Now the historic First Church for twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars. Okay, thank you. Those opposed? Okay. And the last one is the historic library windows for twenty-five thousand dollars. Okay, those opposed? Okay, I may be wrong, but I think those were all unanimous votes. Okay, so now we're going to Article Two. All right, so somebody's gonna move that article?
I move to approve the regional school district agreement between the towns of Bolton, Lancaster, and Stowe as printed in Article Two of the warrant.
Okay, so we have Leah Vivarina, the chairman, or the chairperson of the Nishoba School Committee to present. We have the superintendent here as well. And we have the finance director if there are questions. So go ahead. So go ahead.
Hi, everybody. So my name is Leo Vivarito, and I currently serve as the chairperson of your school committee. So I'll try to make this brief. The reason why we are bringing to you an amendment to the regional agreement is because a few years ago in 2019, we realized that we were out of compliance with one person, one vote. And so through the work of a committee called the Regional Agreement Amendment Advisory Committee and DESI combined, we all came up with not only a solution to the one-person-one-vote non-compliance issue, but also a string of other things that we found in the regional agreement that needed to be updated. So, do you guys have my presentation? It's somewhat useful. There were some materials that were put out front, too, that will explain to you the differences. I will say that the old document and the new document look wildly different, but there is very little substantive change other than the composition of the committee. So I'd like to say thank you to the committee that worked with us. They were members from all the communities and from many members... Many of the boards across the three towns. And so here are... Should I wait? Okay, so fantastic. So basically, the membership is different. Each town got one additional member. We've been operating under that composition for a while. We changed the vacancy procedure just a little bit to be more in line with what the town governments do. Our term is going to be extended to the June organizational meeting, and we included the powers and duties of school committees by mass general law. So, next slide. Thank you. We also made sure that the location of the schools would be central and moving students in case of an emergency, which is not there. I apologize. We put a clause in, just in case there is an emergency, we can move the kids quickly under the superintendent's leadership. The fiscal matters piece is a little bit more complicated, so we made sure that the school committee will adopt a budget by March 15th so that the select boards and the FinCom slash advisory committees can work together on that. We have a proposition two and a half consideration. The superintendent is now compelled to meet with the town leaders in a roundtable to make sure that there is cooperation, although that's already happening. So thank you to the superintendent on that. Operating costs are going to be based upon foundation enrollment, which is five-year rolling average of enrollment across the towns. Other district-wide capital costs will be assessed in the same way that operating costs are assessed. And we brought some clarity around how we assess capital costs between $5,000 and $10,000, and it basically syncs up with the lease agreements. We added statutory language that explains how the regional school district incurs debt, but there's no change there. That is exactly how we incurred the debt in 1998 for the high schools renovation. We added a little statutory language that requires us to or explains the excess and deficiency fund, and we added some oversight responsibility to our audit advisory committee, which we felt very strongly about. We tweaked the transportation language to ensure reimbursement from the state. And with regard to the amendment procedure, it is virtually the same, unless we need to make an amendment that changes the composition in the future in order to remain compliant with one person, one vote. That will be a two-thirds majority of the three towns, whereas all other amendments are a absolute majority. Whenever a town is seeking to withdraw or be admitted to the regional district, it has to be basically by unanimous decision across the three towns. And I think that that brings it to a conclusion. Those are all the changes that we're making to the regional agreement, and we ask for your support in this amendment. Happy to take questions, though.
Okay, discussion. It was saying... Okay, thank you. Discussion, yes, Mr. Duke.
Hi, John Schumacher Hardy, 90, Redstone Hill Road. You mentioned one of the changes was if one of the towns wanted to withdraw from the region, a regional school, it would be required a unanimous vote. What's the current language? Is that being changed from something? Or is that the same as what's already?
So there are changes with regard to that, and if you have the cover letter that is on the materials outside...
Could you please just tell us what the current procedure would be to withdraw?
So the current procedure is... Well, hold on one second. Do you have the cover letter? So, in the current regional agreement, the current version permits a town to withdraw by majority vote at a town meeting, but only if a majority of the school committee members, not from the withdrawing town, agree. The withdrawing town remains liable for all indebtedness, et cetera. So ultimately, in the current language, school committee members would be the deciders of whether or not the region dissolves. Whereas in the new language, the RAC and the school committee decided that considering the implication of towns withdrawing from the district to the other towns, that there should be more of a cooperative process. I will also say that we've inserted other statutory language that the state requires and that the Department of Education requires. So say if Stowe wanted to withdraw, there's a whole handful of things that they would need to do to satisfy DESI's requirement to withdraw, and they would have to get the other two towns to agree.
So this change would make it a lot more difficult for a town to withdraw?
That is the idea. And I'll just give you an example why. So I want you guys to imagine that Bolton decides tomorrow that they want to withdraw and that Lancaster and Stowe will remain in the region. Think about the implication of that, considering the current high school sits inside the town of Bolton. What would Stowe and Lancaster do? So it would create a tremendous amount of disruption for the other two towns. And so we would hope that if the region was going to dissolve, which we imagine it probably won't, even under the current language, considering it's been in place since 1961, that there would have to be more discussion and conversation around that dissolution.
Thank you for that example. I'm just curious now, from what you said, if such a scenario ever took place, which I doubt, who owns the asset of the school, the region or the town of Bolton?
So there is language in the agreement that takes into account how the amendment would have to be crafted in the withdrawal. So if Bolton were to withdraw, the amendment that gets crafted that then also gets brought to the next town meeting would have to be an incredibly complicated legal opinion on how the assets are divided.
We support Minuteman, and that's not in our town, too. We could still go back and forth if we... It just seems...
Minuteman's completely different.
Yeah, but still, it seems to me that, in my way of thinking, the more accountability, oversight, control that towns have individually over their students or their school system, the better. By taking yet more of our determination away from us and being held hostage to these other two towns potentially, that's not helpful for our town.
I don't see it that way, but I appreciate your perspective.
Thank you.
Yeah, hostage-taking is not exactly the way I view it.
Next, please.
John Quill, 45, Spex Pond, Dab. Just want to make sure I...
Just step closer to the microphone.
Understand. Are you asking us to give up our veto right on the budget for the schools? Where right now, we have to have a... All three towns have to agree?
Oh, okay.
For two-thirds?
So are you... Nope, this is only to make an amendment to the document. This has absolutely nothing to do with the budget. That remains the same. Nothing is changing with regard...
Lancaster wouldn't use its leverage as a veto.
So with regard to the current regional agreement, right now, two of the three towns need to approve the budget. With regard to our proposed amended agreement, we would still only need two of the three towns to vote for the budget.
So we don't really have any leverage?
No, 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 but what I'm talking about is how to amend this document. And amending this document is changing.
I guess a recommendation would be to all three towns approve the budget. That way, a town like Lancaster, which doesn't have the actual financial resources of Bolton and Stowe, doesn't get dragged along. We lose our negotiating leverage to keep the budget in check.
So the regional agreement amendment advisory committee did not bring that forth as a change to be made. We are maintaining the current language.
I'd recommend that you try to bring that forward.
And believe me, you can amend this document at any point in time. So this is a living document, and the amendment process is there for you to bring this forth next town meeting, if you choose.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your green card. Thank you. All those opposed? Okay, seeing less than five opposed, that clearly passes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Hold on one second. Okay, next. Ms. Turner.
Mr. Harper, moderator, excuse me. I move to establish the spending limits on the various revolving funds for fiscal year 2024 as printed in Article 3 of the warrant.
Second. Okay, and I'm recognizing Kate Higges.
Good evening again. Article 3 seeks approval to fund and spend money from the town's various department revolving accounts. Affirmative action would allow for the appropriation of funds seen here up to the maximum numbers listed on the right-hand side. These are revolving accounts which are made up not of tax dollars. They are comprised of revenues collected for services or programs where fees are assessed to pay for staffing, instructors, materials, or other departmental needs outside of the general fund appropriation. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion. Yes, ma'am.
Rebecca Young-Jones, 94 Barnes Court. What is the $358 for the recycling sum?
That is the amount that's remaining in their revolving account.
Other discussion? Okay, all in favor, your green card, please. All those opposed? Appears to be an unanimous vote. Thank you. Next, Article 4.
Mr. Moderator, ma'am?
Hold on a second. I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
I just... You mentioned earlier there were three articles we're not going to consider tonight. I'm just trying to get a sense of where the evening's going, and if you could tell us which ones those are.
It's going very slowly.
Well, that I...
The three articles regarding planning board or zoning, those are not going forward.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $4 million to pay the cost of the engineering, design, construction, reconstruction, and installation of the water mains within town, including the payment of all incidental or related costs. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow a set amount under and pursuant to General Law Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes to the town therefore. And provided further, that in order to carry out the purposes of this vote, any appropriate officials of the town are authorized to apply for, accept, and expend any federal or state grants that may be available for this project.
Second. Okay. Now, if Mr. Bartlett is here, I'm going to ask him to be on alert here, on standby to answer any questions. But yes, go ahead.
This article seeks authorization for the town treasurer to borrow $4 million from the Water Enterprise to use for the replacement and engineering for various water mains throughout town. The interest and loan payments on this amount will be repaid from the Water Enterprise, which is a collection of fees paid for services. No general fund monies will be used for this loan. Public Works Superintendent Kevin Bartlett is here this evening for anyone who has questions relative to this project or the appropriation. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion, please. Okay. Seeing nobody making their way to the microphone, all those in favor, the green card, please. Those opposed? See, two no votes in the... Three no votes in the gym, I think. As that clearly passes.
Two... Two-thirds.
Oh, okay, I'm corrected. It is a two-thirds vote, but if everybody in favor again, I just... Please raise... Okay, those opposed, keep the opposed up, please. So three, and clearly there's, you know, two-thirds vote, so that passes. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate $125,000 from the Manual Energy Enterprise Fund to finance the operation of the landfill solar array for fiscal year 2024 as printed in Article 5 of the warrant.
Second. Okay. Recognize Kate. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article seeks authorization to raise and appropriate up to $125,000 for the operation, maintenance, and repair of the municipal solar array located on the town's old landfill off of Route 70. Currently, we are paying the debt which stemmed from borrowing authorization for $1.2 million when the solar field was being constructed. That loan will be paid off in the year 2033. However, this bond... A bond of this type is not like others in the traditional municipal world. This bond is called a qualified energy bond, which is issued through the federal government. Each quarter, Lancaster's treasurer files a report with the government, and after that is accepted, we are then given a credit back. This amount has historically been just under the interest payment due for the year. The amount appropriated each year, as seen here, covers the principal and interest payments for what was borrowed and also covers alarm monitoring, battery, and equipment replacements as needed. The money appropriated comes from the sale of solar renewable energy credits, or also called RECs for short. RECs are retroactive, meaning that for 2024, we will be collecting for calendar year 23. As the years go by, there will be a reduction in the amount of collected RECs, particularly as the system ages and loses productivity. The hope is that when the solar field was constructed, that the buildup of the solar enterprise's free cash would eventually carry the town through to the payoff amount. So taxpayers would not be responsible for paying money for or towards the solar field. To date, this has been true. And as of the close of last fiscal year, the cash amount in the solar enterprise account totals $654,333. Practically speaking, the solar field supplements the electricity required to and for most town buildings. Last year, this resulted in the town paying only $42,615 for electricity. The credits from the electricity generated from the solar farm keeps costs of the town's electricity down throughout the year. And credits are moved around to cover the most expensive town buildings first, working down from there. Approval of this article is necessary to sustain this operation. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor, raise your green card, please. Thank you. All those opposed? We're on a roll. It's a unanimous vote. Okay, Article 6. Article 6, please.
I move to appropriate $1,150 from the Water Enterprise Fund to finance the operation of the Water Department for fiscal year 2024 as printed in Article 6 of the warrant.
Second. Yes, Kate.
This article seeks to fund the operational expenses associated with the Water Department. This is funded by a collection and appropriation of fees which users of the water system pay. No general fund monies are used for this operation. However, town meeting action to appropriate the funds is necessary to run the division. The individual appropriations are outlined here and further broken down into the operational needs for the division. Again, Public Works Superintendent Kevin Bartlett is here this evening if anyone has any questions relative to this appropriation or the department. Thank you.
Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of the article? Green card, please. All those opposed? Appears to be another unanimous vote. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I move to amend, uh, Chapter One-Forty of the town's general bylaws as printed in Article Seven of the warrant effective June First, 2023.
Second. Thank you. Yes, Kate.
Article Seven seeks to change the town's personnel code, which is outdated and contains several errors which are not in keeping with best practices in the human resources management field. It also contains contradictory language throughout. This code is to be replaced with a new personnel bylaw, which refers back to a set of policies overseen and voted upon by a mixture of select board and town meeting. The purpose of any personnel bylaw is to establish fair and equitable personnel policies, systems, and procedures, which promote the lawful, uniform, fair, and equitable application of both personnel policies, practices, and procedures. This bylaw, once adopted, will allow the town a set of parameters for town staff which complies with the current human resources laws and regulations and clearly defines employee roles, responsibilities, benefits, and working conditions. It also ensures that union employee contract language is similar to non-union language, promoting a workplace which is inclusive, fair, and consistent. The current town code has many flaws, including several areas which remove progressive disciplinary actions and allow for very part-time employees to receive paid time off and other benefits generally associated with full-time or year-round personnel positions. There are no systems of time-off accrual, and when some of the clauses are compared to Lancaster's union language, the differences could be considered violations of the Fair Labor Standards Act. The Mass Equal Pay Act also took effect on July First, in 2018. This law provides clarity as to what may be considered unlawful wage discrimination and adds protections and language to personnel standards which ensure greater fairness and equity in the workplace. The town code does not mention these updated laws and regulations. And further, practices that are outlined in the current code are in conflict with many of the new laws. Removing the outdated code allows the town to maintain many of the current procedures which are in place, but also allows us to codify and better articulate the terms and conditions of non-union employment so there are no ambiguities relative to expectations and benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion, please. Okay, seeing none, uh, all those in favor, please raise your green card. Thank you. Those opposed? Okay, two, uh, three, uh, no's, but clearly that passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move to adopt the classification plan effective July One, 2023, as printed in Article Eight of the warrant.
Second. Okay. Yes, others.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article Eight seeks approval of non-union classification scale. The table printed in the warrant reflects a 2% increase for those employees who are not covered by collective bargaining agreements or employment contracts. Thank you.
Sixteen seconds, that was a record.
That's the one.
Uh, okay, discussion. Yes, sir.
Russ Williston for Highfield Drive. I just had a question. I'm not familiar with this. But if you go down to grade seventeen to step, I don't know, maybe four or five, like, your pay starts to go down from the previous step in grade. Is that intentional, or is...
Could you say, which step again?
Grade seventeen, the last row on page seven.
That isn't what mine is.
Oh, uh, between five and six, it goes down by...
Yeah, it starts to decrease.
Two cents or something.
If you look at the last column, you can kind of see that things increase until you get down to seventeen.
Um, that was a good catch in the warrant. Let me go, yep, I see it. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I wonder why, well, there is no grade seventeen, so we can, can we amend? Uh, thank you, Russ. Hold on one second.
The initial response is there is no grade seventeen in the town, so it may be a non-issue, but thank you for clarifying. We'll get it clarified. All right, thank you. Chris, can we have the mic on for the select board?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Moderator, I move that we amend the table in Article Eight to delete grades seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen as they are not applicable in town.
Second. Okay. Discussion on it, and I guess the most basic, do we have our grades seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen in the town?
We do not.
All right. Discussion on the article, I mean, the amendment. Okay, uh, no discussion. Uh, we're going to vote on the amendment to eliminate seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen from the grades. All those in favor? All those opposed? Uh, appears to be unanimous, because now we'll vote on the article. All those in favor of the article as amended? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. That passes. It appears unanimous again. So now we got, um, now we have Article Nine.
Oh, she's coming back up for nine? Okay.
Okay, uh, now, Article Nine. This is Lake and Serving. Wherever you're comfortable, I know it's hard to see the screen up here.
Mr. Moderator? Do I make a motion? Or do you want...
This is citizens, or this is...
No, it's, anybody can read it, and I'll be here for questions.
Okay. I move to approve Article Nine as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and as printed in the warrant.
Second. Okay. Yes.
Basically, this is just part of the law. It, um, instructs the treasurer to put the funds in the appropriate buckets per the law. Ten percent, ten percent, ten percent for historic, open space recreation, and affordable housing, five percent for administration, and sixty-five for undesignedated, which can be used for any, any project. So it's just...
Those were the buckets.
Yeah, those are the four buckets, and that's how it's, um, it's estimated to be. The state contribution is estimated to be less this year because that comes from the Registry of Deeds, and the Registry of Deeds is slowing down on their business.
Thank you. I want you to stand by, um, discussion. Seeing none, those in favor, please raise your green card. Those opposed? Appears to be unanimous. Thank you. Uh, Article Ten was already voted. And that passed. Article Eleven is one of the zoning bylaws that is not moving forward this evening. Article Twelve is another zoning bylaw that is not moving forward this evening. So now we have, um, Article Thirteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the select board to establish an abutter lot sales program as printed in Article Thirteen of the warrant.
Second. Okay. Ms. Hodges, you're presenting.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article Thirteen seeks authorization for the select board to create an abutter lot sales program for Lancaster. An abutter lot sales program establishes a means to facilitate the sale of town-owned parcels, which are either acquired by foreclosure or gifted to the town. These are sold to property owners who meet a definition of a abutter as defined by zoning regulations, the planning board, and the select board. The goal of this program is to give property owners a chance to acquire vacant parcels which work to improve current lands and to encourage private ownership and maintenance of these lands as they are not suitable for development or town use. Affirmative action on this article allows the town to work with various boards, committees, and town staff to set parameters for the program which are in the highest and best interest of Lancaster, both financially and environmentally. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have two quick questions.
Please announce.
Tim Castner, Fifty-five, Fire Row, Ten. Uh, the first one references Article Twenty, the citizens petition. Could someone explain the difference? And are we voting on the same thing twice, or what exactly is going on with that?
Very good question. Um, so this Article Thirteen is the town's position where we are adopting a program where the town boards and committees and town staff would be responsible for setting the parameters. Um, and while we would perhaps look at other communities, um, we wouldn't be pigeonholed by any one community, and we would, um, adopt regulations and standards for the program that are best for Lancaster. The article that is a citizens petition relies heavily on the town of Littleton's program, uh, which is a fine program, but, um, hasn't been vetted by Lancaster boards and committees and may not have all of the parameters that Lancaster residents would want, or boards and committees would want.
And the second question briefly, uh, over the past decade or so, the town has transferred control of a number of foreclosed-upon properties for conservation land purposes, to add to the town forest, for example. Uh, does, does this, like, change how things like that would work? Or, um, how did those considerations go in? Or is all available property just put into this fund automatically?
Sure. So when they're transferred, um, ownership for something like conservation, that's considered a municipal use, although it, we're not putting a building or something on it. Um, so that wouldn't be part of the abutter lot program. These would be, um, uh, parcels that the town has no municipal use for, even if it's just as open space. And they're small parcels. Um, that would be set by, again, the, the boards that I mentioned before, but they're generally speaking, very square foot, very small square footage.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is David Murphy. I live at Thirty-six Vincent Ave in the Spec Pond Association. And I actually put forward the citizens petition for Article Twenty for the abutters program. I don't know if it's correct protocol to speak to that here, or if I can move to have that moved up back to back so we can discuss that immediately following this, since they are so very similar.
Well, I'll entertain that after this vote is taken, but do you have anything particular on this article?
Nope, there are noticeable differences between this proposal and Article Twenty.
So if you want, you stand by, because I don't think it will be long. Uh, next, please.
Uh, yes, thank you, Ann Obley for Turner Lane. And I have a question I'm hoping, um, can be answered. So this is going to establish an abutter lot sales program. Will there be an opportunity in the future to know what that is and make, have input for citizens to really understand? Can you just describe how that works? That'd be helpful.
Yes. So, um, what would happen is boilerplate language would be developed, um, by my office in consultation with council, and then the actual parameters via, uh, how much, uh, the town would like to charge per square foot, what the definition of an abutter is, um, you know, how often these type of, uh, things would be considered for sale. Um, those would all be determined at public meetings with public input. In addition, um, we would have to come forward, we, meaning the town, with a list of, um, applicable parcels that would then have to go in front of town meeting as a list for sale and then be adopted. And we would have to gain permission from town meeting to sell those properties. So there'd be plenty of input for that.
That's great, thanks, Kate. That's really clarifying. Um, do you have in mind lot size already? Like, is that, is that expected to be part of the rules, but you don't know what they are yet? But when you say small, could you give us some indication of what they are?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to speak for the, for the, either the planning or zoning boards, which I, I assume are going to be working with the assessors for that, but I would say they would be non-buildable.
Okay. And, and you just, when you brought up the boards, you triggered one more question, which is, do you expect this to reside, uh, within a commit, a single committee to be developed? Or will it be a committee set up, you know, one of the existing committees? Or do you expect to create a committee who will draft this policy?
Um, so that would be up to the select board, how they do it. I think, um, there are some committees where we have an embarrassment of riches of people who want to be on it, others that we do not. So, um, I'm not sure that this would generate as much interest as others, but I could be wrong. Um, what I would say is that there are many communities that run this type of program through the treasury and assessor's office, others through community development and planning, and others have it through, um, zoning or the planning board. So I think that would probably be discussion, including with those boards and committees that are existing, if, if this is something that they can take on even in a small piece.
Thank you. So it's TBD depending on what we vote and the select board decides?
Absolutely. And likely not the last time we'll talk about it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, please raise your green card. Thank you. All opposed? Okay, seeing one no, that clearly passes. Now, Article Fourteen was another zoning article that's not moving forward. And, uh, Jean, I'm going to ask you to wait, because I said to Mr. Murphy I would entertain him, and he graciously stepped aside. So if you want to come forward, Mr. Murphy, to move your article out of order.
Okay, great. Again, my name is David Murphy. I live at Thirty-six Vincent Ave. We are in the Spec Pond Association. I put forward the citizens petition actually, um, before. I was aware that the town was going to do the same thing, and I decided to keep my, mine in as kind of a belt-and-suspenders approach to this. Under my proposal, we're using closely, more closely, the town of Littleton's abutter program. That specifies that the lots are 1,800 square feet or smaller, which is pretty small. Uh, in the town of Littleton Plan, they spell for a dollar a square foot, which might seem low, but considering these are unbuildable lots, if you look at it per acre, that's almost forty thousand per acre. Under my proposal, rather than the town forming a list and going before committees or whatever, people that know of a town-owned piece of land can approach the town to purchase that. This is of particular interest to the people in the Spec Pond Association.
So, Mr. ... Before you go too far, we haven't moved it to, we haven't had a vote to move it, advance it. Okay, so you kind of jumped right into the article, so...
I was unaware of the program.
Okay, so if you want to make a motion to...
I'd like to make a motion that we advance it.
Advance Article Twenty to now.
Now.
Okay. Okay. So all moved and seconded, uh, all those, I haven't counted. All those in favor, yes. Please raise your card. Uh, anybody opposed? Two, uh, now, this is just about advancing it forward. So there, it seems to be three, but clearly that's a majority. It passes. So now, if you want to present your article...
So if I may continue.
You have to kind of read it, and, or say what you're doing, not the reasoning.
I, I, I pretty much know it by heart. My plan calls for...
I'm sorry, and I'm trying to be difficult, but as each of the select board members, or as the, uh, they've moved the question, they kind of read it, either you can say "as presented" in the article.
As presented.
You're moving it? Okay. Now, is there a second? Okay, now, correct it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Okay, under my proposal, we use the town of Littleton's program more closely. This spells out clearly a program that has been vetted to the state and approved by the state, so should move seamlessly into Lancaster's abutter program. Under my plan, and Littleton's, uh, the lot sizes are smaller than 1,800 square feet. The price proposed by Littleton, which they have been using, is a dollar a square foot. These are non-buildable lots. These are of particular interest to my community, which is a Spec Pond community, because at the time when the Spec Pond Association was formed in the late nineteen twenties, every single lot in the association was twenty feet by eighty feet. So if you wanted 200 feet, you bought ten lots. Because of this and because of the foreclosures during the Great Depression, there are numerous twenty-foot by eighty-foot pieces of land that are owned by the town. Past, in the twenty-two years I've been here, I've seen the town have two auctions. The... The level of clearing the title to something that may have been foreclosed upon in 1939 is difficult and requires a higher standard. So often these lots are not pushed forward to auction. Also, often these lots sell for less than it costs the town in legal fees to get a higher standard clear title where they can sell at an auction, then the auctioneer takes out his commission. So this program allows people that are directly abutting the land, not across the street. You have to be continuously adjacent to the land to purchase pieces of land to improve your septic system, improve your driveway, improve your garden, any number of uses. And these are of particular interest to the very small lot sizes in the Spec Pond Association, many of which need special board health approval to upgrade their septic systems. So this is kind of a win-win for everyone. It takes pieces of unused land off the town books. It gives it to your neighbors that, you know, can really use the land. And also, one other thing that it does, you sell these pieces of land at auction, they can be bought by speculators or people on the more wealthy side of the ponds that are just looking for a place to park their boats. I think somebody would rather have a piece of land next to them for a garden or a septic system rather than somebody that they don't know just parking their boat in. So I urge you to vote yes in Article 20 also. I'm available for questions if anyone wants.
Right. I have one. You mentioned 1,800 square feet.
Correct.
Is that in the article?
That is in the Littleton plan, which a Littleton plan is in the article. So rather than have 10 pages in the article, I just summarize it as using the town of Littleton's plan.
Okay, thank you. Still stand by questions? Yes.
So we've been with Mr. Murphy. I appreciate the work he has put into this. He's a very diligent resident who's working hard for the people in his neighborhood and for the town, so we appreciate that. I do think that, as the town administrator mentioned in the last article, we consider that the town's plan gives us more freedom to develop a town-specific, a plan specific to this town and not just piggybacking off of Littleton. These plans were developed at the same time, so it was good intentions all around, but I would encourage a no vote on this so that there's some more clarity with the ticket vote we just took.
If I may just respond to that briefly, one concern I had, and that's why I like the clarity of having a plan in front of us. I have personally sat through and had business before the Zong Board of Appeals where it took three meetings to determine that a tent was not an abutter. So I'm just attempting to add clarity and streamline the process rather than have it hang up in committee for a year or so.
Any other comments?
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, now, again, when we call for the vote, and if somebody is looking to have a motion to reconsider, I just make sure that you are painfully obvious that you are voting, and we can identify that you were in the prevailing vote. So all those in favor of the article as presented, please raise your green card. All right, I'm going to ask to count. The numbers are dwindling, and I'm trying to figure out if we have. So please keep your green card raised. Put your, put your, raise your yes or no. Anybody in favor? Okay, I'm just asking. Thank you. This private is in favor. There are 39 in favor in this room. David, could you say how many in favor in the gym?
I have five in the gym. Five?
Five in favor. And in the cafeteria?
One.
One. Okay. So we have 45 in favor. Now, those opposed? David, those opposed?
Five in the gym.
And the cafeteria?
11.
11 opposed. Okay, thank you. Thank, I guess it was not as close as I was making it out to be. So the, there were 45 total in favor, 95 opposed. So that fails.
I think you make a motion to reconsider?
Discussion, discussion on reconsideration. Oh, in favor of just, again, if you were on the prevailing side, you want to vote that you are not in favor of reconsideration. So those willing to, wishing to have reconsideration, open the article back up. All those in favor, please raise your, your green card. Okay, those opposed? So the article for reconsideration fails. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the select board to petition the general court as printed in Section A of Article 15 of the warrant.
Second. Thank you. Kate, are you presenting this one?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This vote being called this evening is a reaffirmation taken of a previous special town meeting vote held in March of 2022. The ask is for the town to permit the select board to enter into a sale partnership agreement with the State's Division of Capital, Asset Management, and Maintenance, also known as DCAM, for the redevelopment and use of the property located off Old Common Road and Route 110. The goal of the sale partnership program is to develop currently vacant or underutilized properties belonging to the Commonwealth. Under this program, land is sold to a municipality for a nominal amount. In Lancaster's case, this amount is $1. The municipality then develops the land for sale or for lease. The sale requires that we share the proceeds of any future sale or lease with the state. In exchange, DCAM provides assistance to us through the sale and bid process, and we have a driver's seat role in how and to what extent we want to develop the property. This site is complex and requires a fair amount of pre-work and study in order to outline conditions to potential developers relative to what can and cannot be accomplished on-site and to what extent, if any, historical, environmental, or other public health barriers exist. In order to explore the site, my office, under the direction of the select board, entered into a partnership agreement with Mass Development late last year. My office simultaneously explored several grant opportunities relative to environmental assessments and onsite due diligence over the last several months. I am pleased to report that we were successful in receiving a grant in the amount of $35,000 to conduct a full environmental assessment or Phase 1 and 2 of the property and to develop a preliminary discussion plan and a vision board relative to the property's reuse. This evening, the select board reviewed the final memo of agreement negotiated between the town and Mass Development, including the grant, and approved it. Should this article pass this evening, the town will file the appropriate special legislation and begin the due diligence efforts covered by the grant. These things will happen simultaneously. While there is a clear picture of what environmentally we'll be dealing with on-site and what may be built or developed on the acreage, the select board can then work with various town boards and committees to develop a plan, if appropriate, and financially beneficial, and then work to assume the property from the state for a dollar. Both DCAM and Mass Development are committed to helping my office draft and issue a comprehensive RFP for interested developers to pitch what they may do with the property and the community, for the community to review. The goals of bringing this extensive and centrally located property back to a state of good order and return it to our tax rules, even in part aligns with our goals for both economic development and tax diversity. Thank you.
Discussion, yes.
Question for one again from Julie Road. I thank Kate for all of her work on this. This is a tremendous opportunity for this town. It's clear that the state is not maintaining their buildings. If you drive by, there are eyesore, and I can only imagine what it's like for the people that live on the street. This is a chance to look at all of our different departments, housing, recreation, open space, and do something really good for the town and create a nice little community. But we can only do this if we find our budget next Monday because there are carrying costs involved where we have to pay some money to assume control of the property. I think this is a great opportunity, but I urge everyone, this is one of the hundred reasons why we have to vote yes to the override by Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? All right, everyone in favor, please raise your green card. Those opposed, your red card. Appears to be unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the select board to create the Tax Fairness Committee, an ad hoc committee as printed in Article 16 of the warrant.
Second. Thank you. Ms. Hargis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 16 seeks permission for the select board to create a tax fairness committee. The creation of a local tax fairness committee has two primary goals. The first is to provide a mechanism for the thoughtful and public examination of issues which surround Lancaster's taxation. Subjects which may be explored include a fair allocation of property tax burdens townwide and potential alternative programs that are non-abatement-driven but closer to grant-like programs. To this end, the committee would set up as ad hoc, tasked with studying these issues and ultimately to make recommendations to the select board relative to tax fairness and relief measures which are appropriate to the community. The second reason for the establishment of the committee is that it serves as a first step in developing a senior means-tested tax exemption program, which, while not the subject of tonight's meeting, is a program which some cities and towns have chosen to pursue in order to earmark dollars and set parameters by which senior residents may be afforded tax relief grants administered through and by the municipality. The fairness committee will also work within, to establish initial parameters of this type of programming, including recommendations for income and home assessment eligibility levels, years of residency requirements, and asset means tests. Once the committee successfully completes these tasks and they are adopted by the select board, the program recommendations would then be incorporated into legislation, which becomes the subject of a next town meeting article. Therefore, it's accepted, the process by which the legislation of parameters for those begin. However, this evening, you're only being asked about on the creation of the Tax Fairness Committee, which carries with it no further town obligation and does not cost the town anything in terms of budget or fees at this time. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion. All right, those all in favor, please raise your green card. Those opposed, your red card.
Sounds great.
Seeing three votes no, that clearly passes.
I think it's just me.
Mr. Moderator? Yes. I move to authorize the select board to petition the general court as printed in Article 17 of the warrant. Second. Thank you. Now, question, is Kate or Chief Hanson you presenting? Yes.
Mr. Moderator, this is to authorize one of the firefighters, Stephen Hilliger, to stay on after 65. He'll be turning 65 this year. It is specific to the firefighter and not a blanket to the department. Steve is an able-bodied mind to continue. He'd like to continue serving the town, and I would hope that everyone will vote in favor of this.
Hold on in case there's a question. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your green card. Those opposed, raise your red card. Steve, it's unanimous. Thank you for continuing your service.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend Chapter 17-8 of the general bylaws as printed in Article 18 of the warrant.
Second. Thank you. Now, presenting, is this, Mr. Christopher, are you presenting this?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and select board. Tom Christopher, 252 Fort Pondin Road. I'm the current chair of the Conservation Commission. Article 18, to amend the Conservation Commission article, to see if the town will vote to amend Article 5 of the Town of Lancaster general bylaws, Chapter 17, Section 17-8, by inserting the bold and italic test and deleting the strike through the text as follows. Article 5 Conservation Commission, Section 17-8 membership. The select board that appoints the Conservation Commission comprised of seven members changed to five members pursuant to the provision on Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8C.
Thank you.
The purpose of this, this request is to reduce the members, the membership requirement of the Conservation Commission. I've been on the commission for over 10 years, and there are very few times that I can recall that we had a full seven-member board. And quite frankly, I couldn't recall any until I was discussing this with our vice-chair, Tom Seidenberg, earlier this evening. And he could recall one time when he first joined the board about five years ago, for about six months, we had a full board. In recent years, it's become more and more difficult to attract members to the commission. And certainly, within the last year, for the most part, we were down to six and even five. And due to the untimely passing of Commissioner Jackson, there was a period of time we were reduced to four members. And if any of us were ill or sick or had a professional commitment, we could not manage enough of a quorum to, quite frankly, do the town's business. And we are required, as many of other town departments of, statutorily, to respond to projects that are placed in front of us within 21 days. And we can't afford to miss those deadlines because that puts the town at risk for legal challenges, and that's something that we would hope to avoid. By reducing the membership of the board, we can also reduce the quorum requirement, and it puts us in a better position to manage the business and the time that we have in front of us without placing any further undue burdens on the existing commissioners. Thank you. I'll answer any questions if the board or anybody else has any.
Just a point of clarification, just want to point out, we do have currently five members appointed.
We do.
So, and this is recommended yes from the select board, and we thank the chair of the Conservation Commission for his work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Okay, those in favor, I see no, nobody making their way to the microphone. Yes, your green cards. And all those opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Before we go to what should be the last article, a couple of things, because I know everyone's going to make a quick exit. So thank you for all, everyone showing up at the meeting this evening, and especially those of you who have stayed through the end. Thanks to Lancaster showing that it seemed, except for the microphone problem the first few minutes, everything seems to be great. Appreciate to be able to see the other rooms. Something that goes unnoticed is in interpreters, and I'm always amazed in court when somebody can hear the judge saying something, repeating it in another language... can hear the judge saying something, repeating it in another language to, let's say, a witness as opposed to defendant. But this evening, we have two sign language interpreters, and I think it's amazing, again, how they can listen and they're instantly repeating, so a round of applause. I hope I didn't leave anyone out, but thank you. Now, the next article. Yes, Ms. Smiley.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move this Article 19 as written, amendment to Lancaster's current recalled bylaw, to amend an act. Section 1 is primarily the main change. Any holder of an elected or appointed office in the town of Lancaster has been indicted for felony, convicted of a misdemeanor, or against whom a finding of reasonable cause of violation of the Code of Ethics has been made in Massachusetts State Ethics Commission or in case whereby there was willful misuse, converted, or misappropriated without authority public property or public funds entrusted to or associated with elected or appointed office to which the office is, has been elected or appointed, may be recalled from office by the registered voters of the town as provided in the act. Currently, the current revision of the bylaw provides no reason, any reason. So the amendment primarily for Section 1, Sections 2 through 9 remain as is unchanged.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Oh, thank you. That was a motion to adjourn the meeting. Yes, sir.
Hi, John Schumacher Harvey, 90 Redstone Hill Road. I move that we amend the modification language with a couple of corrections and one insertion. Let me give you my printed copy.
And I would second that amendment.
What I'm looking to do is make, make the change after where it says of Lancaster who has, so any holder of an elected or appointed office in the town of Lancaster who has, insert comma, during their current term, comma. So that way, if they had a drunk-driving accident when they were in college, you're not going to be able to recall them. But if they're, if they did these, any of these things in the time of their term, yes, we need some provisions in there. I would also add after Code of Ethics, the word "that" reads better. Code of Ethics, "that" has been made by the Massachusetts State Ethics Commission with capital C. So those are the changes I propose to amend this modification language.
And again, I would second those corrections.
Thank you. Okay, discussion on the...
Can we just go back to the point, Kate, can we just put the slides? Can we go back to the reasons? Can we get the slide for the reasons? Yeah. So, if everyone's had a chance to read this, I think, you know, again, we all agree, it's a good time to do it. We've had a decade of some recalls that probably were pretty disruptive to our town and our neighbors, and I think it's a good positive step forward to bring back some power for the town.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Frederick Coulson. I live at 357 Nicholas Drive. I stand opposed to the amendment on the grounds, I work at a school, and I know kids around the country are abused all the time. I get the drunk-driving exclusion when you're in college.
Please speak into the microphone.
But many times, child abuse is discovered and comes out years later. If we have a person working in our town with kids who has abused a child, I think that person should be recalled.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to go to the, to the gym. Okay, yes, Ms., you can proceed.
Hi, Erin Smith, Hawthorne Lane.
Hold on a second. Get closer to the mic or turn it on.
Erin Smith, Hawthorne Lane. I feel like this article is somewhat limiting the citizens' rights to recall an elected official whom was elected by the citizens. It's restricting it to involve other, whether it be the Ethics Commission or whatnot, in order for citizens to be able to elect someone that they, to recall someone they elected. So it's a restriction on our rights as citizens, is how I view this terminology change. And really, it's not an easy task. We've seen it this year, what had to be done to have certain board members recalled. It's a large task, it's not easy. It's not like one person can show up and say, "I want them recalled." It doesn't work that way. There's a large process, it's a big process that has to be done, so enough people have to be in alignment with the recall for it to happen. So I am not in favor of this.
Thank you. I'm still waiting for discussion. Okay. Yes, sir.
John Murphy, 12 Burbank Lane. I would urge everyone to vote against this. I think we as Americans have a right to alter our government as we see fit, and this really restricts your ability to do that. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Speaking to the amendment, the reason I wanted to have that inserted is because somebody running for office duly elected that has a past drunk-driving record, as I use the example, that should be brought forward during the campaign. That's something in the past, could have been 30 years in the past, why should they be penalized if this passes? So it's limiting the application of these reasons to an event that would have occurred during the term of that person, not something from way back in their past, whatever it may or may not be. But we're not even at the point to discuss the article, we're talking about the amendment right now. But if we, if we had the amendment, if we had the article pass without this amendment, then we would leave ourselves open to, as I mentioned, somebody with, they were 18, they did drunk driving, or they got caught with illegal substances or something, they're 60, 70 years old now and fine, they shouldn't be penalized for something way back then. Has to be something that happened during the term, their current term, is what I'm adding to this. Then we can discuss whether or not we like the article itself.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes.
Sorry, thank you. My question is, who determines willful misuse, converted, or misappropriated? Who determines whether it's willful misuse?
I think that would be from a conviction or a state ethics violation.
But it says ethics violation or in case whereby there was willful misuse.
That's right, either or.
But who determines whether willful misuse may put down?
Again, it can be, as it's, as we learned this evening, something related, tangible, legal or illegal activity determined by court of law or, you know, ethics. Ethics, the way it's tied in.
My concern is the subjectivity of it, where we can't even nail down an answer on that here. How can we ask?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think we can get legal, legal...
They were the ones who raised the question to me.
So if they could offer some boundaries, I think, you know, that makes sense. So, again, the purpose of it was to put bound reasons for logical, specific bad behavior, illegal behavior, or unethical behavior.
Okay, thank you. I have no further comment.
Thank you. Any other comments on the amendment?
Mr. Moderator, I'm not sure if I'm talking about the amendment or the...
First identify yourself.
I'm sorry, Leslie Allison, 343 Brockman Road. Can I make my statement, and you can tell me if you think it's appropriate one way or the other? It seems like, so first of all, I support some type of modification to the ability to recall elected officials in our town, but it seems like based on the discussion I've heard tonight, that maybe there needs to be a little more refinement of the words or the way that we do this, so perhaps we should be discussing this a little bit more and bringing it up to a vote at a later date.
Thank you. Any other comments?
We're discussing the amendment right now, correct, Mr. Moderator?
We're just, we are about to vote on the amendment. Yes. So, those in favor of amending the article as Mr. Schumacher outlined, please raise your green card. Those opposed to amending the article? Okay, that is a clear majority, so the amendment fails. Now, we're back to the article as it was originally presented, and I guess I'll continue discussion on that, so anyone wishing to be heard, please make your way to the microphone.
So, I cannot support the article with it being opened-ended the other way, but I must say, I feel compelled to say, the recall process has been very harmful to this town. It's become a weaponized political football. It's been ugly, counterproductive. We need to set realistic criteria, so it just can't be somebody didn't like the way somebody sneezed. This is an effort to try to make a legitimate standard or bar for a litmus test as to whether or not someone should be recalled. The way it stands now, anybody willy-nilly with one of the lowest thresholds in the whole Commonwealth can just start this ugly process again. If this doesn't pass, and again, I have a hard time supporting it without that language because I don't think someone should be penalized from 30 years ago when they were 18 doing a dumb thing. But we do need to, as a town, put some serious thought into this because it's become a very expensive and counterproductive political weapon, more than it's been helpful to the town.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I know that you were making your way, I didn't realize, I didn't look at the camera, so, yes, ma'am, in the cafeteria, or the gym.
Erin Smith, Hawthorne Lane.
A little closer, please.
Erin Smith, Hawthorne Lane. It is not a willy-nilly process. I watched people go through it in the last year, the whole town should have been aware of what the process was. So any reason can be brought forth for someone to be recalled, but the process is not willy-nilly, and it is not simple. It is lengthy and takes a lot of effort by many people in town in order for it to happen. And then it goes to vote anyways, so ultimately, the voters do get the final say, and that's the way it should be. Not the Ethics Commission, not the legal system, it should be the voters who voted them in who have the say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann O'Leary for Turner Lane. I guess I'd like to offer another amendment to strike some of the language that is challenging to determine facts on, I think, and I'll offer that in just a minute, but I'm...
Is it written?
Well, I don't have it written. I can't just move to strike some of the language, is that not possible?
We'll see, I don't know how, how it's going to be.
Yeah, kind of responding to some of the comments that have been made about the challenges of the language, and I didn't anticipate that that would arise tonight, so I couldn't print something to bring here. I guess what I want to say is that the reasons that have been given in the recall petitions over the past year have no way to be verified. They are matters of opinion, and certainly there is a process that's outlined that is maintained in the recall law, so the recall law itself will stand. As Mr. Schumacher Harvey suggested, though, this would provide some constraints around it and maintain our democratic process, which we exercise at the ballot box every year. So my move, my motion is to strike the following language from this Article 19, and didn't ask Sue first.
Please speak into the microphone.
I hope it's all right. So going right after Massachusetts State Ethics Commission, I would strike from "or", in Section 1, I would strike from "or", in a case whereby there was willful misuse, converted, or misappropriated without authority, public property, sorry, I have to... Public property or public funds entrusted to or associated with the elected or appointed office to which the official is, has been elected or appointed. And just get rid of all of that because it's murky and it doesn't help us put the boundaries on that this particular article was meant to do. My motion is to strike that language alone from the proposal in Section 1.
I was trying to follow it, but could you please just repeat it again?
Yes, yes, so in Article 19, under Section 1, immediately after the words Massachusetts State Ethics Commission.
So that's on the next to the last line of the page.
Yes, yep. And you would strike from "or", and the next sentence you would strike, "in a case whereby there was willful misuse, converted, or misappropriated without authority, public property or public funds entrusted to or associated with the elected or appointed office to which the official is, has been elected or appointed." So you just strike that whole sort of middle clause and end with, "may be recalled from office by the registered voters of the town provided in, as provided in this act."
There is a second? Okay, so bear with me a minute.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Discussion on the amendment. Okay, seeing no discussion, we will go to a vote. Those in favor of the amendment of striking that language? Please raise your green card. Those opposed? Okay, too close for me to count, so I'm going to engage the counters again. Please, your green card, please, first, the green cards. If those are in favor.
Mr. Moderator, I had one yes in the gym.
David, I wasn't realizing it was yours, that's just the vote I'm looking for.
What?
Okay, David?
I had one yes in the gym.
Okay. And? Do we have a vote in the cafeteria?
Zero.
Zero, okay, thank you. So we have 49 in favor, those opposed. Okay, keep it up, please, and we'll count. David, David, those opposed in your room?
I have seven no votes in the gym.
Jesse?
Six.
Six, thank you. Okay, so in total, we're 49 in favor of amending the article and 75 against, so the amendment fails. Now we're back to the original article as presented.
All right, Mr. Moderator. So the town has a few issues with what is in here. One is that the article as written says petition the great and general court, but town meeting cannot petition the court, so we would have to know who is petitioning, and that would have to be part of the motion. Secondly, Section 1 says any holder of elected or appointed office, and then, you know, the idea is that through all of these means, they can be recalled. You can't recall a member of an appointed office. Appointed offices are covered either by employment contracts, union contracts, or they are seated through an appointing authority. So I'll use myself for an example. I am holding an appointed office, I have an employment contract. If a majority of the town would like me removed, I think they would have to tell the Select Board that loudly and enough times that they do it, but they, the Select Board has to do that. The town, through a petition, cannot, cannot do that. So that has a legal implication as well, in that it's not legally allowed, so. Mr. Moderator?
Just hold on one second, please. Yes, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, was Alex you retired?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
So, Mr. Moderator, it seems obvious to me that there are some issues with the article, but I, I'm speaking as a, we haven't discussed this or endorsed this, but I'm speaking as myself, an individual, 620 Main Street, Lancaster. I will say that I have witnessed the history of recalls and to be, and I believe that the history of recalls is destructive, not just in Lancaster, but I spoke when we initiated the... But I spoke when we initiated the recall law years ago, which was a citizen's petition, and we have found flaws with that as well against the initial recall law. I would encourage the citizens to remind that we have the best recall provision that we could have, and it's called the ballot box. We get to vote on our elected officials whenever their term is up. The recalls that we have faced have been extremely costly for our legal department. They've been extremely costly for relationships in town, and I think that they are destructive. So while I doubt that this will pass, I would encourage others, myself, to bring this back in a cleaner, better way in the fall, and I'll encourage my fellow selectmen to talk about writing a law with the cooperation of town council.
Thank you.
Could I just make a point of clarification with regard to the petition in the great general court? That was language that was taken directly from the existing recall languages that we referenced for submitting this. So again, that was taken right out of common language, and it may be updated now or somewhere else, but certainly it was just a formatting type of a thing.
Absolutely. So I appreciate that legislative process is really complicated and it's not acceptable to normal citizens, which is a problem that I find on many levels. But when you're looking at that actual legislation, yes, it does start that way, but when we have a motion at town meeting, we need to vote to authorize the body to submit the petition. And if you look at, you know, Article 17, for example, it's authorizing the select board to submit the petition. So that language, the language that the legislature will look for to ensure that they are properly authorized to adopt the special act, and it's a very complicated process. So, you know, no fault that we do need those kind of magic words.
Great, thank you for the point of clarification. I also want to note, select board did recommend it, take affirmative action, so I guess I'd like to see if the... It says it in the law, so I'm confused. But certainly happy to take a recommendation for any board to, or any other citizen, to make an amendment to the change. I think for all the points, maybe we should put some boundaries around our recall process so that it doesn't continue to divide and cost us a great deal of money. So I welcome any corrections or any amendments to bring forth to the voters of Lancaster. Thank you.
Okay, before you go, no, hold on a second. Before you go, Susan, the, so with town council's comment, are you looking to amend your own article?
Yes, I guess my assumption, perhaps...
No, no, that's not the...
Yes, the short answer is yes.
Okay, how?
I assume that had been done with the affirmative action on the select board recommendation. So that was my erroneous assumption.
And I don't think that answers it, but then about the point that Kate made in section one, where it says "or appointed," are you also looking to strike that in your amendment?
Yes, you can strike that for...
Okay, I need something...
So we would need to take out any reference to appointed officials?
Non-appointed officials, committee members who are appointed but not retaliating.
So appointed or non-paid, appointed, I think, appointed.
Non-paid, sorry. Hold on. And I apologize, you know, it's like the last article, but this is talking about willy-nilly. I don't want to have something...
It's not willy-nilly. It's not meant to be so...
No, but I don't want the language to be sloppy, so we need to be specific, and I just want to make sure that that is specifically identified.
I would think that the recommendation that Ms. Hodges made would be, we could put into language to remove...
But she's not a voter here. She doesn't have right to amend, so it's your article, so somebody on your side of the table needs to make a motion to amend it, not, you know...
So I'd like to make an amendment to the existing, as presented, article.
Okay.
Removing appointed, any reference to appointed official.
All right.
And with regard to the introduction of the petition, we can certainly amend that to the recommended procedure that has to happen with the legislative body, and I'm not sure what the verbiage would be because I did take it directly out of our town bylaw.
Okay, thank you. I'm just trying to get that to be clear.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
All right, is that seconded?
Seconded.
Okay. Now, I know, Mr. Carrigan, you had a comment.
Yeah, apologies for the either typo or whatnot. We specifically on citizens' petitions voted to take no action for the select board, so I apologize. My warrant says no action, but apologies that if there is some confusion. The select board took no action relative to a recommendation on this article.
Okay, so, yes...
Point of clarification, is it on the screen as amended? I just can't see.
No, we're, again, we're removing any reference to appointed official.
So can you read it how it should read?
Sure.
Thank you.
Starting...
Starting just with the section one.
Starting from the top, including...
Yeah, all amendments, yeah, just so we understand.
So I think we have to start with...
So the amendment would be to remove in the, let's see, the last sentence, I'm sorry, any holder of an elected, strike, or appointed, or appointed, any holder of an elected office in the town of Lancaster, moving forward through the article to the last sentence, and removing associated with the elected, and again, striking, appointed office, to which the office is, has been elected, strike or appointed again, may be recalled from office by the registered voters of the town as provided in this act.
And am I correct in you, but you were intending to say, as opposed to petition the great and general court, to the language the town council said you have to authorize the select board to petition the court?
That's right.
Is that...
Yes. Two points of clarification.
They don't have to be...
Has that been seconded? Seconded, okay. Now, hold, stand by so that there are two people behind you who want to speak, and yes, you're up, please.
Susan Sussman, Nicholas Drive. I propose that this article be either withdrawn or delayed or pulled until it is in a form that it can be presented to this board.
Seconded. Okay. So that's your comment, it's not a further motion, so...
No, it will be. That it be withdrawn. I know it's in the midst, it may be out of order to do that, and I'll step back after you want to vote on this, but it seems that this, a lot of thought has gone into this, but it is not ready for prime time.
Okay. Hold on, so it's motion seconded?
That's fine. If people want to have more time to rewrite it and legally review it from the board, that would be great. We can bring it back.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the...
I'm happy to withdraw...
Let me just complete my sentence. We have a motion to amend the motion to amend the article. So, and I'm gonna get confused just saying that, but am I correct, you're saying you're looking to withdraw your article?
We will withdraw the article for further clarification and then we're back to the board at a later date.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody opposed? No. So it's withdrawn. Okay, I believe that we have covered all of the articles, not in the same order they were printed, but again, thank you for everyone coming this evening, and... I'm waiting for that. Yes, thank you. Okay, seconded? Anybody, all in favor of adjourned the meeting or dissolving the meeting? Thank you. Anybody opposed? Thank you.